I give my call to order this committee the whole meeting. It is Monday, July 20th, 2020, and the time is 8:07. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to start this meeting by recognizing this special moment in time and the contributions of the D-39 community. When school ended last year, we didn't understand how long this pandemic would go on, how long we would need to modify, how long we would provide education to our students. We did not, could not imagine that this was going to be lasting throughout the, excuse me, throughout the fall. Now, predictions are that we'll see no significant change until the second quarter of next year. To the D-39 staff, last time we met, school had just ended for the summer. Normally, summer is a time for reflection and relaxation, some downtime with family and planning for the new year. But this summer's been different. First, we know you started the summer exhausted from getting a remote learning program up and running within 72 hours. Next, we know you've all been working around the clock to prepare for and improve upon a new way of teaching, whether it be remote, hybrid, or a modified version of in-person instruction. You've been working from home with no playbook, and you've been making plans, knowing that when school starts, the situation will be less than ideal. Thank you. We, the board, want to give special recognition to Dr. Primo Scollion and her leadership team. You are guiding us through this time, sorting through the data, the guidelines, and parent feedback to help make the best plan possible. We know that when you make choices, many times you are picking between two options, neither of which are ideal. But we have the utmost faith that you are making decisions in the best interest of everyone in our community and based on data and science. Thank you. To the teachers, we are asking a lot of you. Each of you have your own unique circumstances and challenges to delivering instruction in the time of COVID. Some of you have your own health challenges, others have young children or live with older relatives in the home. Not all of you have an ideal online setup. None of you signed up to do remote learning or hybrid learning. None of you have had to teach children sitting six feet apart wearing a mask. We know this is hard, and it will remain hard until we have a vaccine. Thank you for all you are doing to educate our children. To the members of the planning and advisory committees, thank you for your hard work. You've sifted through ever-changing data and guidance. You've identified clear north stars. The priorities are clear. Our plans are coming together, and we all look forward to hearing more details later this morning. To the parents, we know being a parent during this time is challenging. We all want our kids to go back to school and not have to manage through the maze of change that is required to be safe. We all want to know what will happen in the fall. But neither of these things are possible right now. Please know that, as a community, our experiences with COVID-19 and our opinions on how education should be delivered and what constitutes acceptable risk sometimes vary and vary greatly. Oftentimes, the administration is having to make a choice between options, none of which are very palatable. One decision will make some of you comfortable, and other decisions will make you uncomfortable. It's the nature of these times. Also know that as things continue to change, oh, know that things continue to change. We are subject to the twists and turns that the virus takes, as well as the ever-changing nature of the guidance from our regulatory bodies. But here's what we want you to know, that everyone in the administration, staff, board, and various committees are all working very hard to sort through the data and make the best decisions for all involved. It's an imperfect science during an unprecedented global crisis. But we put the health and well-being of all involved at the forefront. And we are committed to listening to you. We read and react to all emails that we receive and the results of every survey. We share information as it becomes available. We are asking for your patience and for your grace. We will roll out plans on July 31st, and we look forward to your feedback. And finally, we pray that your family, your families are and stay well. And with that, I open the meeting. Walter Clark, please call the roll.
Lisa Schneider Fitz.
Here.
Joseph Zerich.
Here.
Rich and Zico.
Here.
Andy Kelly.
Here.
Mark Steen.
Here.
Alex Stermer.
Here.
Aaron Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the June 8th, 2020 committee as a whole and executive session minutes.
I move to approve the June 8th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Been made in seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? If so, by the way, do we still need to call the roll for everything now that we're in person? We're not required to. So can I just? Let's do it today. Okay?
While we're doing it.
If so, Walter Clark, please call the roll.
Joseph Zerich.
Yes.
Yes.
Andy Kelly.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Alan Stermer.
Yes.
Aaron Stone.
Yes.
At least Schneider Fitz.
Yes. We begin with the Facility Development Committee. I'm turning the meeting over to FTC Chair, Alan Stermer.
And I can't find the sheet on summer construction updates.
It's just a summer construction update, and Cory is going to introduce Steve, who's here with us today.
Instead of Joe, we have Steve Lee from the Center Association to give us some information on the summer projects.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Great to be here. Joe wanted me to be sure to say we are on time and under budget as expected.
That's what we like to hear.
And, and we do too. Construction progress at Central Harper and High Crest are all going very well. Even in these difficult times, work is going along very well. To a lesser extent, Ramona and McKinsey's life, life safety work is going well, and we see nothing that causes us any concern. Thanks, as always, to the school staff and to Stan's staff for giving us great access to everything. And I know you have a lot on your agenda today, so I just wanted to tell you it's going very, very well from our seat.
Any questions?
That's the kind of report we like to hear.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Thanks, you too.
Okay.
Great. Next, we have a. Oh, wait, Karen. I just wanted to add, because it's not on the agenda, but we did receive the letter from the village regarding the access in the Stormwater Project, so they continue to be ahead of schedule. Mark Steen and I had the opportunity to tour the project last week. It was amazing. Truly an engineering feat, really, really neat to walk through. But they, they are on time at this point, and they expect to be able to turn over our parking lot by August 15th and not have to use the alternative of birch wood for access. So they expect to have all large trucks removed. They do advise that in turning over the parking lot, they believe it would be best to wait until September to come back and put the final layer on the asphalt of the parking lot and finish everything up just to ensure that everything is finalized in the project and nothing in the parking lot gets got or otherwise.
Stan, anything else that I should have added there that I didn't? Kelly?
Okay. I have a question about that. So in your report, we talked about they wanted us to keep kids off the grass, and we would miss the season. And I guess I just wonder if they can use sod instead, just given that in the time of COVID, outdoor spaces at a premium? And I'm assuming there was some cost savings given?
The, we asked the same, and Stan, or Kelly, jump in if you want. But we asked the same and were advised that the Park District feels very strongly that, that the area above the, the project must be seeded, not sodded. And they want to make sure that it isn't trampled while it's growing. So that area will remain fenced. We are in conversations about the possibility of accessing the Cotton Grove, Cottonwood Grove there, because we think that may provide us with some additional outdoor space that is shaded and would be really nice. Beyond that, we do have access to the fields that are closer to WJHS as, as well as along the walking path. Although it doesn't look like a whole lot of space, there is space enough to take a class or two or three out in properly distance and use that grass as well. Our big ask is that the parking, the Park District allow us to access the, the Grove for flexible classrooms, lunchtime, anything like that. That would take creating a walking path from High Crest to the Grove. The Grove is, is, is kind of fenced off. So that's our, that's our request. We'll see what the Park District has to say about it.
And one more quick question. If they go ahead and do the final paving over the lot in September, how disruptive will that be? I know they'll drop off and pick up, given our transportation situation might be more congested than normal.
Right. We're told it would happen over the weekend or on non-instructional days, and it should not impact. Stan, anything I missed there? Kelly?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, I'll turn it back to President.
Thank you. Very strange not to see people's faces.
Next, we have Strategy Committee items. I turn the meeting over to Strategy Chair, Mark Steen.
Great, and I'll turn it right back over to Dr. Primo Scollion with our fall reopening planning update, which should be like a sentence or two.
Just one slide, Mark. No, thank you. We are excited to have the opportunity to update the board today on our planning efforts. We have been feverishly working since, well, March, really. But in earnest, our committees have been working since late May, early June. And we also have an advisory task force who is assisting us. All of those groups represents all stakeholders across our community. We have more than 100 participants on our teams. The planning committees meet about three times a week for two hours each meeting. So it's been intensive, especially over the summer. It's been especially intensive. Our administrators are all supporting the planning team or the, the advisory task force. And our advisory task force is, is a really engaged group of parents representing all of our schools and a great deal of expertise. So we're really happy to provide an update today. Our hope in today's meeting is that we will get affirmation from the board that our commitments remain the same, that there hasn't been a need to revise those commitments. So we'll review those and look for affirmation from the board. And then we will go toward our planning goals. And our goal remains building in-person student learning and connection as often as possible while abiding by state and health and safety guidelines. And for us, health and safety has been and remains a priority. We cannot move forward without making that our priority. But we also understand the value of in-person instruction. So we have remained committed to adhering to the health and safety needs and the guidance that is provided to us while also maximizing that in-person instruction and connection as much as possible. So we'll walk through some of the scenarios. We've developed scenarios for full in-person, hybrid, and fully remote at each of our different levels. And we'll look for feedback from the board on those scenarios. And then we've got a few other discussion points we'd like to get some feedback from the board. I have, I'm surrounded by many administrators, and I'm so appreciative, appreciative of all of their support, as well as those who are at home right now, not able to physically join us, but listening in and paying attention to the work that we're doing and supporting our work. So our administrative team have really done an incredible job, thinking creatively in, in leading in this unprecedented time and in partnering with our teachers and our staff to ensure that we have plans that really adhere to our commitments as a district. So with that, I will walk us through our commitments, and then some of our, our team will support in walking through the scenarios. So in terms of our planning commitments, these have remained the same throughout, really, since probably before May. These planning commitments have remained in place. The fifth one that you see there bolded is an additional one meant to emphasize consistency. And so I'll just kind of talk through these. I already mentioned health and safety being a priority. Health and safety for staff and students is a priority. In every plan that we have developed in every scenario, we have maintained that as our first priority. Developing flexible and adaptable instructional models is, is another commitment of ours, making sure that we can provide consistency and the ability to respond without interruption. So we were so very fortunate to be able to change relatively quickly from in-person to remote last year. I think we, we did so in one of the swiftest ways possible when comparing our, our abilities and our performance with other districts and with what our goal is. We really did make that switch without much interruption. But we also recognized there was improvement to be made. And so our teams have been working to ensure that we learn from what we did last spring, and we incorporate those improvements into our plans for the fall, whether we're remote, we're hybrid, or we're in-person. So we want to make sure that our scenarios, our models, really allow us to respond to whatever the health data tells us, whatever changes and guidance might come about. We expect those to continue to change, and we want to be able to respond without interruption for our students and for our staff. Our third commitment is making sure that we are manageable, meaningful, and sustainable in our teaching and learning. We know that that's critical to our ongoing success and that targeted and connected learning is our goal. And by that, we always talk about the fact that we know what we're aiming for. Our targeted learning standards are at the forefront of everything that we're doing and that we're connected across environments and between people. Those connections are so critically important to our success. So that fifth bullet point was recommended by the, the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee of our Planning Committee. And they have really identified the need for consistency, recognizing that consistency facilitates improved engagement and alignment among all stakeholders. So that means consistency across grade levels. It means consistency vertically for, for all of our grades. It also means consistency among our teachers and consistency in what our parents can expect of the programming that we're providing to them. We know that for our students, if we can maintain that consistency and, and really be clear about our expectations for their engagement and learning, they will also be more successful in their learning. And so that, that, that idea of consistency has really helped to guide our efforts throughout. So these are our overall, those are our overall commitments. As you know, we have a planning committee and an advisory task force. I mentioned that there are more than 100 representatives on this, on this, on these teams. They've done research, they've reviewed all available guidance input, surveys, and information. They've helped to refine our planning assumptions, which then guide all of our scenario development. And they have reviewed and provided feedback on these preliminary structural models that we're going to be talking about today. They will continue to work through July 1st. The reality is, it, they may continue to work up until the first day of school and maybe even beyond that. But we do have a commitment of communicating to our families on July 31st what our structural scenarios will look like for fall reopening. Our ed council, which is our administrative team, has also contributed significantly to this work. What, oh, what you see on the right is, is really how we've organized ourselves into three subcommittees. There's Health and Safety Subcommittee focused on all the considerations that we identified early on for that category. There's a School Operations and Logistics Team, and then there's a Teaching and Learning Team. And each of those teams have worked side by side, but in parallel with each other to really help to inform our planning efforts. Thanks, Tony. So our Fall 2020 focus, again, to provide in-person learning and connections as often as possible while abiding by state and health, state health and safety guidelines. We really had to take into account what our physical space would allow us to do and what our staffing will allow us to do. In staffing and licensure, it looks a little different at the elementary level than it does when you get to the junior high level. And so we've really had to carefully consider, how can we maximize our staff and ensure that our students are, are getting the most targeted and meaningful instructional support possible? We have remained committed to following the guidelines of the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. There are thousands of different pieces of guidance out there and available to us. Our committees have reviewed all of that guidance to help inform them and, and guide the science behind our decisions. But at the end of the day, we, we have really maintained a commitment to ensuring that we're adhering to IDPH and ISB. They have jurisdiction, but also it has given us kind of that guardrail of what we absolutely must do. Again, wanting to make sure that our plans are flexible enough to implement full in-person learning, partial in-person learning, or remote learning in connected ways in trying to avoid interruption as much as possible. And then considering different models, because our staffing and our curriculum are different, our, the size of our schools and the student enrollment at our elementary schools versus that High Crest and WJHS are so very different, we allowed our teams to really think outside the box and recognize that the, the needs of students are different, and we may need to plan differently for those different groups. I did want to highlight just, I, I mentioned the IDPH and the ISB guidance. I know you're all well aware of it, but I did want to highlight these. The, the guiding documents are exceptionally long, so I pulled out some of the most important pressing of sorts, elements of their guidance. And these are really the elements that have created some limits to the planning that we've been able to do. So the first one that really gave us cause for careful consideration is the physical distancing requirement of six feet as much as possible. To us, we've interpreted that to mean our classroom environments must consider and incorporate six feet of distance for all individuals within that classroom. They qualify with as much as possible, so there is some flexibility there. But for us, because health and safety is such a priority for us, we wanted to make sure that within our classrooms, we have accommodated that six feet of distance to the greatest extent possible. So you'll hear our administrators talk today about the differences between full in-person instruction and a hybrid model, and what could be allowed for that six feet of distance. We can't have large groups of, of more than 50, and if there are even outside, we have to have 30 feet of distance between. So we're planning around that. Face coverings must be worn within our schools at all times. The instructional day must be five hours, whether in-person and/or remote. A combination must constitute five hours of instruction, instructional activities. We have to do symptom checks and temperature checks. There's an allowance for self-certification. So our, our teams are really working through what makes the most sense for students and families and the school to ensure that we're doing that properly. Cleaning and disinfecting is built into all of our plans and will continue to be refined as we move forward with our planning. We assume today that we will be in Phase Four as we open school in August. So as we talk and as we start to make recommendations for what August will look like, we are doing that based on the assumption that the ISB guidance and the IDPH guidance isn't going to change and the assumption that we will remain in Phase Four. Obviously, we've built out these plans that will allow us, if we move to Phase Five, we can adjust very quickly, and if we move back to Phase Three, we can adjust very quickly. If the IDPH and ISB adjust their guidance, we have already considered the areas where we think they may consider adjustments, and we've kind of built those into our plans. So we really are trying to be as flexible and adaptable as possible. But as we talk through some of the, the planning scenarios today, you'll hear us talk with the assumption that ISB and IDPH guidance are remaining the same and that Phase Four is the phase Illinois, sorry, our region will be in, in August when we start school. We do have five instructional days that can be used for planning purposes. At this time, we recognize, and we'll talk a little later, about the possibility of needing to change our calendar just a little bit, especially in light of the November election requirements. But we, we do hope to, to use those days throughout the school year to support our staff and the ongoing professional development needs that we may have. Thank you, Tony. So again, as, as we talk through our instructional model scenarios, which is what we will jump into here in just a minute, keep in mind that we have worked really hard to build that continuum of connected services. We very much want our students to remain connected to their classroom and connected to their teacher, regardless of which model we have to shift into. So we were really thoughtful in developing these models to ensure that whatever it looks like at a hybrid model, if we're able to move to full in-person, those connections remain the same. And if we need to move back to a hybrid model or move back to remote learning, those connections again remain the same and continuous for our students. We have tried to reduce class size as much as possible to allow for, sorry, Tony, to allow for physical spacing within classrooms and maximizing in-person instruction. We've also paid close attention to the guidance that we should be maintaining bubbles of connection or bubbles for interaction. So that essentially means that we want to limit interactions between groups of students. So you'll hear as our administrators start to present that we've created bubbles of students. Those homerooms remain intact throughout the in-person instructional day. That limits any opportunity for interaction between students, but it also limits the risk of transmission there as well. So with that, I'm just going to pause for a minute and make sure that in terms of our commitments and our goals, we are on track, that the board doesn't have any feedback that would advise revision of any of that.
So are we all good with that? I think that the administration is looking for an absolute affirmation.
Oh, yeah.
Any concerns?
I have one question. Five hours of instruction, so I'd have to do that right over there.
Yeah, Haptic Kindergarten is an exception to that.
Good, good, thank you, sir.
Yeah, good. I have some detailed questions about contingency planning. Should things go wrong? Yeah, people getting sick.
Do you want to hold that?
Yeah, yeah, I can hold that.
Yeah, I just, I think we need, we need guidance, we need the affirmation on the principles and the, what else, Carrie?
And the goal, and the goals.
Do we have that? It's going to be super, okay.
Yeah, and I, and, and John, you bring up some good points, and I'm sure we'll have some, some questions to contribute to our discussion later. Let's, let us get through the scenarios. And, and the, the reality is, right now, we need, we need to move forward with our scenarios, and then we can build out some of those logistical plans. If instead, we're presenting scenarios that the board does not like or wants us to revise significantly, we need to settle on our scenarios before we can really in detail build out some of the, the in-depth logistics. But please know that our planning committees have been working really hard to build those out, knowing that these are our goals and our commitments thus far. So there, there is a little bit of a what comes first here, and we need to make sure that we have scenarios that the board is comfortable with at this point.
And I just want to let everybody know, we'll get to everybody's questions. I just want to make sure that we like systematically get through, like affirming or giving guidance so that you can proceed.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And so with that, then we will, we will ask our elementary principals. We have two principals here to assist us in presenting the instructional models that we are proposing at the elementary level. So Cindy Anderson and David Nasiakos are here with us today. And again, please know that their presentation represents our entire elementary administrative team as well as the advisory task force and planning committee's input on these scenarios.
Great, thank you, Carrie. To a hug, please, Tony. So the elementary model, Dana and I are going to talk about all three models. I'm going to start with in-person because obviously our goal is to get the kids in school as much as possible. And so we figured out that the class size, the maximum class size we think we can have in most classrooms is between 16 and 18 students. And we all went into our different buildings and measured the room set up classrooms where the desks were six feet apart, and we realized we can fit 20 people in the classroom. So allowing for one homeroom teacher and then another special ed teacher or if there's a professional or someone else to be in the room, that gives a maximum of 16 to 18 students in the room. Now, there is some variance if we use some larger spaces, and we are going to, in order to make that happen, have to use alternative spaces within the building. So we're looking at using places like the gyms, the cafeterias, the learning classrooms, other spaces where we can have classrooms, because we normally have class sizes between 24 and 27. This is going to take up more space. But one of the key components of this, as Carrie mentioned, is that's their bubble, their pod. And so those students will remain together with that group of kids throughout the day, and there won't be a lot of traveling throughout the building. They will be staying in their classroom or maybe going outdoors for a couple of classes throughout the day or, or mass break or P E. We do believe that in-person is really necessary, especially for these younger kids when we're talking about preschool through fourth grade, to build that relationship and connection. It's a really important time for them to meet their teacher and get to know their classmates. And we, so we really focus on how can we make that happen in a meaningful way for these young kids. We also think that reading, writing, and math are really the focus that we have to focus on. How do we get that to in-person instruction? So we've been spending a lot of time. How do we get that to in-person instruction? So we've been spending a lot of time trying to nail that down. We also know that PE every day is important, got to get our kids movement, and we're looking at doing that outside as much as possible. And then we're considering what other specials might be able to be offered, either in-person in their classroom or outside. Lunch, we would have in the classroom or sometimes outdoor if space and weather provides the opportunity. And so we're figuring out the logistics of how to make that possible and safe for all of our students. Another consideration of making this happen would be getting teachers' plan time. So we would want to move that to the beginning or end of the day so that it allows the teachers to be with the students in the middle of the day, which would result in a bit of a shortened day for the students. This also, because we would need more gen ed teachers, would result in some resign, the assignment of some staff and possibly some hiring of staff. So we're, we've been figuring out what that looks like for each of our buildings. And then of course, preschool at Ramona and special ed throughout the district have a lot of different considerations having fit within this programming. And a lot of it's individualized and so we're trying to figure out how to best plan for all of those students within this program. And we're, we believe that this could work for all of our students. We can support them hopefully as well. And then the biggest part of this is that it's fluid with a hybrid model, which deals.
Yeah, and Zach, you're coming, coming to a point earlier, our goal as we are building out these three models was to be consistent. So that what the in-person schedule may look like, that will be consistent and fluid throughout hybrid and remote. We know that we are changing and guidance is changing and COVID phases are changing. So we want to be able to move very fluidly from an in-person to a hybrid to a remote and vice versa for consistency for our students and our staff. If assumptions change with COVID, if our guidance changes, then we are building out a hybrid model. What would that look like? That would take our original rosters of 16 to 18 that we built out for in-person and split them in half to be eight to nine students, which would then attend on alternating days. Group A attends two days a week, group B two days a week, and then that fifth day would be an alternating day. And we would then align with five A to make sure that families are aligned, days are aligned throughout our schedule. In-class time would be the time that we would maximize at in-person time. Sitting groupings, direct instruction, mini lessons. At home would still, of course, include robust, meaningful, and targeted learning with multiple synchronous opportunities throughout the day. That is currently what we're evaluating. What are those synchronous opportunities? What will that look like? And what is best to make sure that we are providing meaningful instruction to our students on the remote days as well? Again, consistency is huge. So we would be consistent in our times. If I was a student that had a 9:00 AM math class, I would have a 9:00 AM math class in person and I would have a 9:00 AM math class at home to provide that consistency. Consistency throughout all three of our models. That's hybrid. Our next, which looks like a short slide here, because we're going to be getting more into full remote learning later in our presentation. We know what remote learning looks like and we've been able to build out and enhance remote learning. We have taken and incorporated the recommendations from our surveys and planning committee to make sure that we are building a remote learning opportunity for students that is again robust, meaningful instruction for them throughout their day, which would exclude daily connections and will go into more depth in remote learning later in the presentation. So those are the three models that we are currently working on for elementary.
All right, it's my turn. So now I'll present in a similar fashion, the same three models at five A. So the first one, like Dana and Cindy both reviewed, is modified full in-person learning. And so, and we call it modified because there are some classes that would be in-person, there would still be some classes that could be on campus, but students would be in their bubble, learning via remote situations. And kids would not change classrooms like they generally do at the junior high and at High Press. So in order to make this work, we measured our classrooms and really that magical number is about 24 students on, in a homeroom. And our general size is about 28, 26 to 28, really closer to 28 from sixth through eighth grade. So we're working right now to reduce that class size and looking at the impact of in-staffing and where that goes from there. It's something that we've done in the past. You'll know at the junior high, we do have our double A teams and so that's already a structure that's in place. So there, there's a little bit of looking at how that impacts our rest. Again, we would maintain our bubbles and pods of students, again, limiting the mixing of groups. Some courses may remain remote. We are looking at lunch in classrooms or possibility of having lunch outdoors in some situations. Implement weather, obviously, there's that. We also, for movement, would have PE outdoors. And then the schedule and the classes segments would be maintained across all three models. So as I go into talking about the hybrid and the remote models, just know that you get Mrs. Jackson as your homeroom teacher, that's your class for all three models. It doesn't change depending on how we. A couple of things, we talked a little bit about how also using smaller class sizes would support stronger teacher and student connection. So really, when you think about having a class of 24 at the middle school, junior high level, there's a lot that you can do to really build those connections between students, between the teachers that are involved in those classes. And they will help with those transitions between the different models. Full in-person is very challenging for the startup school, given the guidelines for social distancing. So if we are putting 24 students in a classroom, that's about four feet of space between kids. And so with the current distance guidelines, it's just not possible in our classrooms with our space, even using multiple spaces in the building. We just don't have the capacity. But again, if the distance changes, then we flip to this. So the next model is the hybrid model, and I think this is where we're really looking based on the guidance right now. So that would, again, the student roster would be Mrs. Jackson's homeroom has 24 students in it, but we would split that into an A and B group. The A group would attend two days a week, the B group would attend the opposite two days a week in-person. And then the fifth day of the week would be an alternating schedule. So we're looking at either a Friday or a Monday as that fifth day of the week, probably a Monday, we're leaning toward that. I think that's the line of other touchpoints. Students again would be bubbled by homeroom for the most part. Can we say that just because some students may have to go out for a class, we have accelerated math classes, we have instructional classes where students may have to mix with somebody in their team or in their house at, at the, at High Press. And so there may be some limited mixing, but those would be in very socially distanced settings. So those are usually smaller classes and we would provide for that social distance in those situations. Students again would have a typical class schedule. So we have a nine-period day. One of those periods is lunch. So all students would be scheduled for those nine periods. And they wouldn't rotate classrooms unless of course there were some classes where they might have to go to a different setting for that instruction. Maximization in-class time. So like Dana and Cindy talked about, we really want to maximize that in-person time for direct instruction and in small group training and instruction. So really looking at how do we harness that time with the students in that A group or that B group to really dig into enhancing the skills and, and reinforcing the essential targets that we're looking to reach throughout the year. We're looking at separating based on alphabet. Again, that's the best way that we could come up with to align with the elementary school, should they need to go to a hybrid model, because then families would come on the same page. I kind of went through that last part, but there's more slides to come on the hybrid model. So continued, we'd have PE outside on in-person days only. So there would not be locker rooms and changing at hybrids or at the junior high. That's just too many people in a too close of a setting. Creative arts, we're looking at holding in-person also. And we're in some discussions with instrumental and music and choir, primarily remote, but there could be a potential for some in-person small ensemble practices, which they've been doing a lot of research on their own. So that's to be determined. Additionally, world language, we would have remote, however, students would be, so world languages, let me just explain this, they, they mix across houses and teams. You could have Team A and B have different Spanish teachers, let's just say. So what we would do is we would have the students in their homeroom. So all Mrs. Jackson's students are doing their world language period, but they're doing it on campus remotely. So they might log into their iPad and have their headphones on and be learning with the teacher in the building down the hall. There could be based on placement. So if we had all of Mrs. Jackson's Spanish students had Mrs. Jackson as their Spanish teacher, Ms. Rota as their Spanish teacher, then we could, we could have Ms. Rota come in and do some small group in-person instruction with those kids. And that's really important with world languages, just with the conversational nature of the beast, if you will. So, so we're looking again at placement to help with some of that. Academic strategies, which is a kind of like a resource class that would take place in-person. And students usually take that in place of a world language or creative arts period. So we would schedule that into their day to be in-person. And WIN is also in-person. So WIN is, we're looking at it really flexibly and using it during that world language period. So if a student needed some support in a targeted way, rather than scheduling them into a WIN class, we would use the teachers to kind of advise that and then we could supersede the, the world language lesson if needed for that on a temporary basis and then they could go back into their class. Students with complex needs, such as students who may have more comprehensive needs or emotional needs, some students that have primarily instructional courses throughout their day would attend daily. So they would not do the A B schedule. We would provide a schedule for them that where they would attend daily and be able to get in-person instruction in all of their classes. Again, decisions about all of the students with special needs would be made on an individual basis because there may be students who don't fit into those categories in the parentheses that may need to come every day for a given reason. And so we have a flexibility in this model to make those accommodations and make sure that they can complete them. The next slide just kind of illustrates the hybrid model for students in-person. So for students, we have Suzie, Linda, Jeff, and Eric. I don't know where I came up with those names. Suzie and Linda are in group A and Jeff and Eric are in group B. So you can see in-person, they all have a daily homeroom. They all have their core classes, those are in purple. They have PE outside, lunches in their room. They have a creative arts class, that's a eighth-period class. We're looking at using larger spaces for those creative arts classes, so being able to spread out that warm kids in there. And then their world language period would be that last period in the day. However, Linda needs some support in math, so she would be getting WIN in-person from perhaps a math teacher or the teacher that's supervising in there. And Jeff has German, so he'd be sitting in 139 and doing that remotely. And Eric has academic strategies. So he would be picked up by his LBS and go to a separate room for his academic strategies class along with other students in that. Oh, sorry, I'm missing my screen. Okay, so the next part of the remote or of the hybrid model is what are those students doing when they're at home? So group A would be remote two days of the week, group B would be remote the other two days a week, and they would again follow their daily schedule. So one of the benefits we have at the five A campus is that they have a nine-period day every day. So we would basically, if you're at home, if you're in school, you're following that same daily schedule. Our, our team really feels that it's very important that the students tune in for live daily homeroom at the same times as it's going on in-person, so that you still have that in-person or you still have that homeroom community. So attendance would be taken for all of the students, all 24 students in the homeroom at the start of the day, every day. And then throughout the class day, we're again, like the elementary team, evaluating what exactly those synchronous opportunities look like. We know for sure world language would be a synchronous class that would be taking place on a daily basis. Probably creative arts as well. So there are some opportunities that we've already kind of planned for, but does it look the same every day? Are there other, are there opportunities to engage synchronously in a live fashion versus a non-live fashion? And what does that look like? We have several tools available to us on the five A campus with School G, where you can monitor actually what students are doing in kind of a live, in first, or in real-time fashion. So we're having lots of those discussions right now. PE would be a mix of synchronous and asynchronous business. So again, we revisit Suzie, Linda, Jeff, and Eric. And Tony, if you'll advance the slide, you can see that Suzie and Jeff are in the same homeroom. So they, Suzie's in-person and Jeff is not in-person. So when you look at their schedule, you'll see that while Suzie's in homeroom, live in, in room 139, Jeff is at home, live in homeroom. While Suzie in first period is in writing, Jeff is also in writing. But Jeff might be engaging, maybe they're all actually doing some sort of writing activity online and the teacher is giving feedback via Google Docs in real-time. Suzie's in reading, Jeff's in reading, maybe they're, Jeff is dialing into the classroom and they're having a book talk via Zoom with a small group in the classroom about a book that they read. Again, so then it changes a little bit for remote and PE. So Suzie would go outside for her PE and Jeff would do his world language synchronous lesson then. That helps us to schedule the, the language teachers during the day for their synchronous lessons, but then also have the opportunity to do that ninth period. Then social studies, and again, these follow the same schedule and then there's opportunities for synchronous instruction throughout. On that last period, where Suzie might be doing her ninth period world language, Spanish in the classroom, that would be a planning period for the general ed teacher. So let's say Jeff's homeroom teacher needs to check in with him during that time. She could say, I'm going to pull all of my remote kids today and we're going to have a live question and answer session or we're going to have kind of a closure for the day, like what did you learn today? Turned your stuff in, what didn't you get to? Let's have a conversation about that. And so a kind of bookending the day, if you will, in a live check-in and a live check-in at the end. And then if you watch the next arrow, Linda and Eric follow a similar pattern. However, Eric, again, remember he has academic strategies, so that would take place, that would move to the third period. But it could also remain in that ninth period day too. So he could actually have a couple of academic strategies check-ins if he needed. Now, let's move to the third. Sorry, that was very long. So full remote learning, and again, you'll hear a little bit more about this in a, in a few minutes, Katie, but full remote learning, we're looking at an enhanced model from what happened in the spring. So we've built in several different things to make it better, more consistent. And so students are able to engage more fully in everyday learning. So they would follow their schedule, basically their classroom, their remote. And we talked on our team about, on the teaching and learning team about, does it, is it more beneficial to do more of a block schedule and extend those periods and so that the students have a better, better way to engage in their learning? So that's a possibility, that we can just flex the schedule and do that. A daily homeroom period, again, that is really important to us. And daily synchronous lessons for core classes. So whereas in the spring, that wasn't as regular, the committee has really discussed having that daily synchronous check-in. And that, they've even developed kind of a framework for like. Daily period for WIN or small group check-ins. So again, using some of that time for helping to enhance the learning targets that we're having for students who may be struggling with the remote situation or who may need a challenge and need to be pushed above. So that WIN and small group check-ins. So that WIN and small group check-ins is really key. Some breaks between classes. We found in the spring that back-to-backing the classes made it kind of onerous on both the students and the teachers. So we wanted to make sure that we settle some of that in. And then PE, creative arts, would be a mix of synchronous and asynchronous. World language would follow more of the core pattern with synchronous instruction. And then academic strategies would have synchronous check-ins on a regular basis, pretty much daily. So, yeah. Full in-person learning, so just to revisit full in-person learning, again, it's challenging for the start of the school year. But what we want to look to you to help guide our decision-making in is, do we set a specific date for that transition to in-person learning? Or do we have some sort of guidance between when we switch between models? So if and when the data supports it, or the guidance for distancing changes? So if they were to say, switch to three-peat guidance, then is that our, is that our kind of trigger to move to that model? In phase five, we would revert to a normal schedule. So that's when we would start to build in the switching of classes and kind of the traditional schedule that our students are used to. However, we would still keep those homerooms intact. So generally, our students move between classes and mix up. So it would be more like Mrs. Jackson's home, Mrs. Jackson's homeroom moves to a different location for their next period. A little bit different still, but I think that is what we need to do to keep our communities intact.
Okay, so our most common experience has been a remote learning. So this section, although a great overview has been provided by my administrative colleagues, will go into more details. And so the focus area is that we'll go over a detail of the instructional model, the school day schedule, curriculum, the staff, and professional development, and special education. The one thing, though, that I wanted to point out is that consistency was heard loud and clear from the teachers, from all of our community, from our parents. That was a really very strong desire. Self-reflections and articulations began last spring. So, and all this input and feedback also began last spring. So when we were reflecting, the reality really, we started right as soon as the reality of our spring had settled in, lots of information. I can tell you that across the board, everyone understands the importance of how to enhance this experience for the whole. So the first one is instructional model. And really, it's what, to summarize all of these bullet points, it would be consistent tools and expectations. Making sure that that's communicated clearly to everyone. So for our elementary schools, CSO, with potential, with Google Classroom as being a resource as well. But everyone would be experiencing CSO. Zoom K-12, we did a deep analysis of Google Meet versus Zoom. We landed in Zoom, it was 100%. Everyone saying that. Daily synchronous lesson framework, that was very, I wanted to know that our staff was committed to that. When it's remote, we feel that that is really important. The attendance in each class, an expectation and process being established. Clearly communicating all of those synchronous expectations for teachers as well as students. And in addition to them, I would say parents and family. And that common collaboration time and the use of our PD days for that much-needed, across-team conversations and planning so that everyone could be working together and staying consistent. So for five-eight, Schoollogy really is the only difference between CSO, so it's CSO or Schoollogy, and the calendar of a one-stop shop. So there's a daily agenda communicated consistently across the board, all of that. So K-12, use of small groups for differentiation. Those next few are exactly the same as the elementary. And then the common collaboration being key as well. So for school day, really, I think the biggest point that we would like to make is the consistent schedule that you perked so much. We've really locked into that. So what we're trying, our hardest, is to make sure that the schedule can be fluid among the three models. So that's true for the entire district. So the transitions in the welcome videos and rolling start of the day, building tech tools, that's gonna be one of our goals at the start of the year, making sure we vet that for our elementary. We've got daily synchronous mini lessons for the core. We firmly believe in the building community. We've been working on that for a long time now, and we know that our students need it. The daily PE will be a mix of synchronous and asynchronous. Related arts is the same. We would incorporate breaks very distinctly in the schedule and plan time for teachers at the start or end of the day, or both. WIN time daily, that's also synchronous. So for five-eight, we would have a block schedule based on the hybrid and modified in-person schedules. And then the agenda would be posted daily on Schoollogy. We would have 25-minute homerooms, that would be synchronous. Breaks in between classes, just like the elementary. Synchronous learning daily for periods for the core and world language, according to the framework that was created. Creative arts and PE would be a mix of synchronous and asynchronous. Plan time would be during the core periods. And the WIN time daily rotations would also be the same. Here professionals be used in meaningful ways in both. I know that's only listed in my guidance across the board, I wanted to point that out. Okay, so this is really the core of which a lot of conversation has happened. And again, you'll see that it's not been broken down into pre-K four and five-eight because each of these points are true for the entire district. One, curriculum maps provide our framework for how teachers know. This is most essential, and here's what's supplemental. And here's how we could prioritize or help prioritize for you what you focus in on. With time remaining, you can go on to here, or you just move on to the next study. So those maps would be annotated with that type of information and guidance for all of the teachers. Not just the classes that we offer, but with their certain skills and competencies that we want to have to set. They need a lot of guidance, not, I'm sorry. We need to be more specific in what we're going to be addressing with all of our students. So executive functioning skill is a really broad, big concept idea. So we have find, tended to prioritize the most essential skills, like following written and oral directions, organization, time management, taking turns, and decision-making and problem-solving. This is all reflections that were, and input that was gathered together and prioritized for you to have the remote learning experience. Technology school, I'll go into more detail about the back-to-school bootcamps, but we have some design for all of our students. Then we've got to prioritize what those essential skills are. And so we've identified some navigating platforms, educational apps, checking for feedback, and email and video etiquette. Social, emotional competencies, our relationship skills, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making are the core competencies that hassle, which we've had some professional development. We have a group that will be working on developing these. But we prioritize the most essential skills like how to cope, how to be resilient and mindful. That's not all inclusive, we just wanted to point that out. Health and safety procedures now become part of class behavior expectations. We always start the year with norms with our students, and therefore we add masks, hand washing, the six feet social distance, how to take a break from your mask, how not to take a break from your mask, all of those fun safety procedures. And then with the materials and resources, we have rich district-wide, district-provided grade-level materials and supplemental materials. Teachers also work together and collaborating and creating new materials. The assessments would also be common as well. Sorry, I skipped. Okay, so the balance of the tech-based and non-tech learning materials was very important for every group. We recognize that this is a great tool, our devices are a great tool, but we also acknowledge the need to figure out a way in the system, reverse school supplies, if you will, of providing that back and forth with schools and families at home. Books that they can tangibly read and rotate and have as their personal hobby at home. So I said that, and then headphones with them. For assessments, NWA MAP will be able to be administered remotely. We are working on that process, there's a lot of guidance from the company. And so one of my coordinators is developing up a protocol for that. And ScoopPad is something that we offer to the community wide, but also to our families and students in summer school. And so we do have a group of teachers, we have students that have tried this. And what they're finding is that the information could be tailored to what they did a study is going to address as far as standards. So this seems to be more of a regular tool, whereas NWA MAP would be one that could benchmark how we're doing throughout the year. Then, of course, all teachers create summative assessments. They will be common so that we know that the standards that we have outlined have been addressed. We've also have the performative assessments, would be tailored to the actual students that are in class, because not all of them would need to go through some of those. Feedback, so ongoing formative and summative feedback could be in the form of oral, or audio, written. That would be through CSO, for elementary and for Schoollogy. There's features in both that allow that. Privacy reports and end of the semester, where no privacy would still make to be true, need to be updated with some of our priority standards, but then after that, it would be the same. So in each of these models, including remote, instruction and learning happen together, the teachers and students, students and students, as well as learning at different times. So students engage in applied practice or enrichment independently, with or without support. So in any of the three models that we've been talking about, including remote, there's learning together, but there's also learning independently. And the last one is for special education. The unique needs of each student will be used to design their daily programming model. So the first bullet point and the second bullet point in both columns say the same thing, the daily contact with the special education staff, and maybe it's small groups. The synchronous services, consistent with IP minutes, individualized and adjusted based on needs. Consistent schedule and communication services for English language learners would be provided synchronously and asynchronously. And most students, or the only distinction for five-day would be most students follow the five-eight schedule and receive the remote synchronous instruction for each class. And LBS's, our specialized staff, works with students in co-taught and instructional classes. So these are, what we wanted to convey here is that our special education students and their programming, we know is unique, and that we are planning for. In a remote setting, we need to be very clear on what we will be engaged with and how their services will be done. And that is something that has been in the forefront. Okay, so now professional development. We call these back-to-school bootcamps, but we realize our teachers obviously need some refreshers. These were, some of these were new platforms and things for them. Our parents and caregivers also need opportunities to learn or just share in some, maybe like webinars or whatnot to learn some of the things that we were about to say at the right side. But then these would also be in the form of lessons for students. And we wanted the topics to be consistent for all of us. The teachers, parents, caregivers, or students. The back-to-school bootcamps would cover things like whatever device that they would be using, orientation, CSO, Schoollogy, Google Classroom, Zoom. What the executive functioning skills are, so that it can be reinforced throughout every environment that the student is in. Remote learning expectations, we feel that all of those need to be learned by teachers, parents, caregivers, students. The social, emotional well-being, how we plan to build community. Also problem-solving tools, how they can do it on their own, or also where to go to find that support. There's other related topics, and it's not, this is not exhaustive, but two examples would be engaging, disengaged students, online and offline balance. Many of our parent meetings that we did last spring, with Tony Dante being one of the core people that was able to deliver that, we found that to be very well-attended and highly appropriate. So we would continue parents-specific ones as well.
Well done, Katie, thank you.
Yeah, really.
Dana, Cindy, and Kelly, it's fun, thank you. So we do want to highlight for the board, Katie spent quite a bit of time reviewing what remote learning will look like in the fall, some of those enhancements to the remote learning program. We fully expect it will not look and feel like remote learning looked and felt in spring. We've been able to really evaluate where we can make improvements there. So we're calling it enhanced remote learning at this point. That covers not only a full remote program, but also what remote learning might look like in a hybrid model. So one of the things that we need feedback on from the board today, in addition to those scenarios, is the option of providing an opt-in option for full remote learning by semester to our families. And so that would essentially look like an opt-in for families, regardless of what's happening at our school, whether we're doing a full in-person or we're doing a hybrid model. A family could opt in to a full remote learning. We would need them to commit to a semester so we can really staff and make sure that everything is in place and available to them. But it would be our recommendation right now, based on the feedback we've gotten from our parents, as well as from our planning committees. We will talk about it a little later, but we would like to make this option available to our families. So I'm gonna just talk through a little bit of what we've received so far in terms of our parent feedback on the recent survey that was sent out to families on Friday. My team hasn't yet seen all of these results unless they were in looking late at night last night. Some that I saw were. But this is just a quick look. We have, as of 8:00 PM last night, we had 2,224 students represented. As of this morning, I just checked a couple of minutes ago, and we have 2,500 students represented on our survey. But the results have been pretty consistent since those first several hundred results. We've seen some pretty significant trends in consistency there. So you'll see here that we have all schools and all grade levels represented. And the survey does remain open through noon Monday today. And then we'll compile all those results. We do want to share those with our planning committee and our advisory task force today. And so that's why we do close it today. If we're able to make this option available, based on the board's feedback, what eventually would happen on July 31st, when we announce the options, this would be an option for our families to opt into. So if we go to the next slide.
It's impossible to see what those.
I apologize.
Are you gonna go over it?
I can just share with you, the pie graph to the left represents the schools. And so you can see that all schools are represented. The pie graph to the right represents grade levels. And so it's really just a representation of who the students are.
But what does it say?
Please identify your school attendance in the fall of 2020. What grade will your child enter in the fall?
There's no preference, there's no correspondence. Oh, okay, thank you.
It's just a representation of who responded to the survey, showing that there was a representation across the district.
Okay.
Sorry, Mark.
I think I figured it out, but the first six, there's six colors here. It's only the six, these six that are actually schools. There's no out-of-school or other represented on this pie chart, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure, thanks.
Yes. And to the right was really just the grade level. So you can see the smallest pie was pre-K, where we had a much smaller response, because we were students there, but otherwise, it's pretty equally distributed. This is, Lisa, what you were asking about.
I didn't want to miss anything.
You haven't missed anything yet. But this is really asking our parents, understanding that we are abiding by health and safety guidelines, and we're building out our plans right now. Masks will be required, social distancing will be required, all those things that we expect to be in place. Masks will be required, social distancing will be required, all those things that we expect to be in place. With all of that in mind, do you plan to send your child to school for in-person instruction for the first semester of school in fall? And we carefully qualified this with, this is not a commitment, but we need to get an idea. Really, so that I can come to the board and advocate on behalf of those who are interested in this option, if we had sufficient interest in it. So what you see on the left there, the blue and the red. The blue represents yes, or most likely, yes, I will send my child for in-person instruction in light of what I know the, the district is planning. The red is no or probably not, I would not send my child for in-person instruction. So you see it's about an 80% to 20% ratio. 20% of our families are indicating right now, based on the responses so far, that they would opt in for a remote, full remote learning program if it's available. What you see on the bottom right-hand side there, we were really looking to gather information about why, what is leading you to do that? Um, and so we recognize there, there are some families whose child might have a medical condition. And so therefore they would need an accommodation or would opt for that the health and safety of their own child's medical condition to be fully remote. That, uh, was a relatively small percentage of respondents. Some responded that they have a family member within their household who has a medical condition. Um, but again, that's a relatively small representation of who's saying that they would opt into a fully remote program. The bulk of those who responded, 44 and a half percent said that I do not feel comfortable sending my child to school under these conditions, and they simply would want to opt into that. The others, so that's the orange part of the pie chart. The green part of the pie, pie chart is similarly situated in that they're saying they want to opt in in light of not knowing yet enough about the program and the services, they probably would opt into remote learning. So we recognize that the green pie, there may be some shifting in preference there once they learn a little bit more about what in-person instruction will look like. But the orange, uh, the lighter orange color, thank you, Mark, is white yellow. We're presuming that those individuals are likely to remain in a, in a preference for fully remote. Probably about, we wouldn't even venture to guess probably how many of the green will jump over to in-person once they're actually required to make an option and once they have more information. But, um, all of that kind of tells us that there's a significant interest in this. The purple, sorry, is other, and then they were able to provide some additional information about why they're making that choice. That's not well represented among those other four choices. So again, this seems to be of interest for our families. We believe it would be, um, appropriate for us to provide this as an option, provided that the numbers, the interest is sufficient to make it a robust, meaningful and connected program. Again, keeping in mind that, that our goal is targeted, um, and effective teaching and learning for all students. Yes.
This is significantly higher than it was the last time.
Thanks for noting that. Yes, it was, um, it was about 10 to 12% of families in the spring indicated that they would want an option for remote learning. I think that circumstances have changed, changed for sure. Um, and I think that at this point, people, um, are making different choices. And so, um, if there is 20% of our student population who would opt into a remote learning program, we do think that this is an option we could make available. It would obviously be really difficult for us to do if there were only two children at each grade level who wanted this. To make that connected and robust and really targeted, um, we think we'd be sacrificing some things. But if there's this many families who would be interested in this, we think that there may be some staff members who would benefit from an accommodation of teaching remotely as well. So it might be a good, um, marriage of needs and acknowledgement that different people really have different needs. And so we'd like to, um, try to offer that. Before I take questions, I did want to just move forward to the next slide, which, um, again shows across grade levels. I wanted to look to see if there is a grade level that more often than not opted for in-person versus remote. So the green is those opting for in-person, the blue is those opting for, um, fully remote if given the option. And there's some variance to be sure, but the first column all the way to the left is first grade, and then it goes all the way up to eighth grade, and then you'll see kindergarten and pre-K, um, to the right. So, so there is some waxing and waning, but essentially it's about 80% that are saying in-person and about 20% who are saying a remote option might be an option they'd like to consider. And then Tony, that last slide, if you could just advance. Um, we looked at mask wearing and asked those, um, individuals. Part of this was information gathering for us and part of it was information sharing to our families to say masks are going to be required. The only way you would be able to enter our school building not wearing a mask is if you have a legitimate medical condition for which you provided documentation. We wanted to find out if there were a lot of individuals in our community who might believe they have that kind of an exception. What you see on the left is there's about 99% of our families who are saying, my child will wear a mask while in person at school. There's about 1% indicating that their child has a medical contraindication of that. When I dug in just a little bit further, the black box on the bottom right is a look at those who selected in-person instruction and how many are saying that they need a medical exception. There were only about, so far, about 10 individuals who said that their child had a medical condition, but still were saying that they would want to consider in-person instruction. So that percentage goes even smaller. It's 99. Something saying they'd be able to wear a mask. And again, as we learned through our in-person ESY, as we were planning for that, we had some families say, there's no way my child will be able to wear a mask. We supported them, families supported them, built some social stories. There are all sorts of, um, good supports for kids. And what we found is staff are wearing masks, students are wearing masks. Even those students whose parents originally maybe thought, this isn't going to work for my child. It, it's worked. It's, it's worked quite well, right?
For the best majority.
So, um, so those are, that, that again, just gives us an image of, of an area of concern that we want to plan around. And we're really pleased with those results. Um, there were some other questions that, um, asked parents to start practicing that now, and we got really good responses there as well. So we are now at our discussion point, and I appreciate the board letting us get through all that information before we get here. I do want to say to the board that at this point, again, assuming we are at phase four, as we start school in August, and assuming that the guidance from IDPAC is we do not change, it would be our collective recommendation that we would start our elementary schools at a modified in full in-person schedule, that first option that you heard Cindy and Dana talking about. And it would be our recommendation that our five eight campus would start on a hybrid model. That again, strictly adheres to the social distancing requirements and allows us to really build those personalized connections with our students, between students and teachers and within their homerooms in a really meaningful way. We think that will give us, um, the best opportunity for targeted, meaningful and manageable learning for our students. We also would recommend to the board that we make available an action program.
So I know I speak on behalf of the entire board. Thank you. Wow. The thought, the rigor, um, really impressive. I just, before we get into what I know will be a robust, um, discussion, it's been a long time since we've done in-person. Do we need a three-minute break?
Yes.
Or is it just me? Okay, let's just adjourn for a couple of minutes.
Okay, I will advise everyone, again, try to maintain your social distancing as you go to the bathroom or step outside, take a mask break, whatever it is that you need to be wearing.
And so now let's open the floor for questions. And I know folks have some.
Well, I have a whole bunch of questions. I won't ask them all.
So why don't we just take turns doing questions? So take, do a question.
One question is, um,
Oh.
That's a great idea. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Sure.
Where do we want to start? Should we start with, um, That sounds great. So I, this is under, um, I think instructional, this falls under instructional. So, um, I just have this burning question about why Schoology. Just because I have heard over and over again, um, from parents. And also when they go to Nutria, it's, it's more through the five through eight. Cause then they switch to Canvas at Nutria. And I could be wrong, and maybe there's people also that have, but that Canvas, I think Canvas is pretty easy to navigate. It's really, kids like it and parents like, you know, parents can see it. Schoology is very difficult.
I think, yeah, and I can, and Tony, I think probably can talk to that a little bit too, but I think, um, you know, Schoology is what our teachers are all trained in. However, we do recognize that it has been a little bit more difficult for families. And so, um, part of the bootcamp idea is that we would be doing more extensive instruction for parents and for students on how to use the different features. And we would also be building inconsistency for pair, or for teachers on what tools they're using. So everybody uses the calendar, everybody posts in that place. Everybody is assigning the same things to their folders so that it's more of a one-stop shop rather than trying to find what you're looking for. And so then taking parents through that. I, Tony, do you want to talk about Canvas versus Schoology?
Yeah, so, um, Schoology is what's referred to as a learning management system and LMS. So it goes back to its first and primary use, which is to facilitate learning with teachers and kids. So an online classroom, interactive, grade book, all the things that would help a teacher instruct in a digital environment. As an offshoot of that, we have parents that need to get in. It's, it's, it may be engaging and interesting and kept social media-esque like for kids. What we have heard for years, and it's not unique to our district either, that it's more confusing for the parents. So it, again, it goes back to what's the primary use of it. So at this point, we haven't heard overwhelming feedback, or actually even very little feedback, that it's not meeting the needs of our teachers and kids. But it's, it's, so what we are talking about is increasing training for parents. We have had recorded, um, videos and other things that haven't been accessed as much as they should, or online training opportunities for parents, just so they can go in and know how to use it. There are other systems, um, there's a couple that are used. Neighboring Schoology, by the way, is the biggest LMS out there and was recently acquired by Power School, which we use. So there's some integration opportunities there too. The other systems that are easier for the parents tend to not be as engaging for the kids. So it's, it's very basic, very bare bones. You can go on, you can easily navigate it, but it doesn't keep the kids' interests. It's not as engaging. It doesn't have the full functionality. So what we've kind of come to realize is that we go back to what is the primary use. So really what we need to do is more, uh, support our parents in making sure they understand where to search for homework or missing assignments or whatever the case is. The other thing that we have to contend to is right now would not be the ideal time to switch LMS. So it's such a huge program that right in the middle to add that into the mix, probably not a good idea. So if we were to ever revisit that, does it no longer meet our needs? Does the parent piece outweigh some of the others? Is there a product, I haven't seen one that really is meets the need kind of a both perfectly. There's always, they always seem to be stronger in one area than another. But if we do that, it should be a comprehensive review, not at this moment. So, um, that feedback has been pretty consistently been given, but what we haven't done, and we're going to maybe as good of a job in, which we'll try to pump up is, is the support piece for it. Hope that answers it.
I'll, I'll add that there's certain features, for example, we've heard the deep enough about wanting to know feedback. And so in our bootcamps for families, that's explicitly going to be pointed out. And the flip side of that, CSO, the platform that's used at elementaries, their, its primary role is really to communicate. So families really do love that because it's very, it's already designed to be that way. We have modified and adjusted to say, hey, this communication works. We need to now make it kind of an LMS for our little students too, because it's easy for them to use as well. So what we've done is taken two very different tools, but then modified and adjusted so that we could meet the needs of families, um, and students in a remote set.
I've heard very good things about CSO. I wasn't questioning that at all.
And CSO first started out as an online portfolio. It, it, to date, to date, it really isn't considered a full LMS. Because of remote learning this summer, they've developed it out quite a bit. I mean, it's, it's kind of inching there. So its strength has always been as an online portfolio and communication tool. Parents love it. You know, it's missing maybe a little more beefier kind of parent, hence the reason you see like Google Classroom supplementing the use of CSO. So there's not one ideal. I have heard feedback on Canvas not having as much engagement tools, especially for middle schoolers. And it's used to varying degrees, and most of the time when I hear of its use, it's all, almost all the time in a high school scenario. I very rarely hear of Canvas or Can, in a elementary district, so, if that helps.
Yes. Other technology questions? Seeing none. Who wants another topic? Sorry.
Sorry. Metrics.
Yeah.
So, um, one of the advantages of being in a high-performing school district like ours is that we have an overly emphasized metrics. Our kids do well, some do even better, and almost none do bad, but they do, we, they're exceptional enough that we notice them and we check in on them. We do all sorts of things to mitigate. This environment, almost by definition, is going to have a wider spread of bigger variance of performance. There are going to be more, there are going to be more cases where people have different abilities to adapt to remote learning, to synchronize asynchronous, to all of the things that we're doing a great job on, but are fundamentally not ideal. Maybe that's a good way to put it. And because of that, the variance is going to be a lot bigger. And it could snowball. I mean, depending on how long we have to do this, if it's even a semester, but if it's a year. At the end of that year, there could be a really, really large difference between the kids that got lost or struggled versus the kids that, oh yeah, this works. You know, I can, I can adapt, you know, I know how to do this, but maybe my parents are helping me or some combination. So I think it's fundamental that we spend more time and focus more on understanding and frequent baseline how the kids are doing, not just did they show up to class, which even that has a problem. Cause it can show up and not actually show up. But, but really, you know, baselining, how did their kids do, you know, over the summer and the, the spring? And then maybe, you know, once a quarter even, but I mean, the, the details are up to you, but I think the fundamental concept is we, there will be a much bigger variance and we need to capture that. And we can't ride on the, we're a high-performing school district and not, not waste a lot of time on testing.
So you would like to see us, um, spend a little more time on assessment and benchmarking student progress within any of these models?
I, I think there's enough variance and obviously some of them more so, but I mean, even the hybrid in-person, I mean, we're doing a great job. You've done a great job coming up with the best we can do under these circumstances. But you also know it's not what we used to do and it's not ideal.
So I'm going to ask Katie, I, I know all of the decisions regarding assessment have not yet been made. There's, that we're coming on that, but Cindy and Kelly, is there any information you can share with Brent regarding, um, assessments at this point, MAP assessments?
Right, so, um, well, we haven't heard yet from the state as far as, you know, which ones we have to do and not have to do, so that aside. The one added plus is that how NWA has created a remote way of doing this, so we would not be hushing that. We would do that fall, winter, spring as well. And to your point, that could be, regardless of what environment we're in, we measure that with the in-person to say, hey, here's the marked difference and the discrepancy. The other part is ScoopPad is adaptive and its standards align in the same way that MAP is. And so we have quite a few, like quite a good number of students using this right now. And so we'll be able to see based on standards, just like how MAP does, more regularly. So, uh, so the classroom. So, uh, so the classroom teacher would be able to design a learning path that aligns with their goals and objectives for the units of study for meeting in MAP. And then we'd be able to collect that diagnostic information. The students actually don't even know they're going through the diagnostic, but the diagnostic could be implemented and pushed out to all of the students and then gathered. So we could also do that. That would be an additional. But we can look into it more and further and, um.
So, let me, it's more off the top of my head, so it's just a concept. But, um, I would, I would like to understand what that process is, that it's more frequent than we've done in the past and that we get a once a quarter update to the board, which may fall into our, our decision-making in terms of, you know, where to go next and our other options, whatever. But, but to have an update once a quarter to the board with enough data that we can discuss.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna write on a similar topic, but, um, I, I think what I, I'm not as concerned, well, I'm also concerned about assessments, but a lot of times that's used to mean standardized tests. And that's less my, what I'm thinking. My thought relative to this is, um, there is a, you know, several interlocking cycles of assess or evaluate, figure out what to do about it, implement, and then evaluate again, right, to, to see what's going on. And so I think, um, I would love to hear more and also more frequently, as, as Frank suggested, about how we are tightening, shortening that cycle so that it's going faster and being more explicit. And, you know, that probably means professional development implications potentially, and also support for teachers because that's just more work, you know? And a lot of this is more work, but the, the core that it's getting at is something that I agree with Frank on, which is, I, I suspect everybody here will expect that, you know, our, our outcomes are gonna start to diverge like this as, as we have to go through different things. And I just want to make sure we're getting that feedback and trying stuff as quickly as possible because, you know, we won't know the right thing to do the first time either. And that's where it's at, we all have to be kind to each other in that, in understanding in that. But the faster we can try something new and see if it works, the faster we'll learn and get better. So just sort of echoing Frank's comment to this point.
Erin, this is a different topic, so I also, yeah. Ellen, is it?
This topic.
Okay.
Um, in terms of assessing students, um, one of the things I, I, that I'm more concerned about than actual assessment of grades or achievement or growth per se, is now that we've been through the beginning of, well, last year, and, and we've seen what happens, I'm really interested in, uh, some professional training for the teachers. I think it's crucial that teachers be made aware and you figure out a, a method by which, um, teachers understand kind of exception-based identification of students. When, like, how to kind of catch students that are, you know, the student that is typically there, you know, you've got small groups of students now, so pods, right? And, um, you know, you have IP and five oh four students, but you also have a ton of students coming back that are typical students who are not in typical situation, who are traumatized and are not comfortable. And you may be back and forth through situations, making them really anxious and uncomfortable, and they may not behave the way they behaved in the past. And so what happened last year with five oh four and IP students, a lot of them, was they just couldn't engage and they checked out. And a lot of teachers, I'm not saying even in District 39, saying just, uh, teachers in other districts, whatever, missed students, like, they just fell off the radar completely, fell off of school, weren't there, weren't present. And I think it wasn't blame on teachers, it's just, it was just, you know, it was chaos. And so a lot of kids got lost in the cracks. Because what happened was they were the exception, they were saying, they were missing. It, it was kind of like, okay, you know, Bobby usually is here and hands things in every day. And all of a sudden Bobby stops handing things in every day. Then all of a sudden it's like he's handing things in once a week. That's not normal for Bobby, like, he, he doesn't do that. And then it's like every two weeks, like, what's happening with Bobby? So instead of letting it get to a crisis situation within the pods where the teacher is learning how to say, okay, this is not normal for this student. Like, this deserves a check-in with Bobby to say, hey, I see you usually hand everything in like every day, you didn't hand, you missed a day. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
Planning for that kind of stuff in terms of an assessment of children and kind of keeping them engaged, that's what I'm more interested in, a plan for that.
Yes, and I think there's two, one topic that you brought up, this is trauma, trauma involved instruction, so those strategies, and we could definitely, um, focus on that as well as the practice of the protocols that all teachers take to, um, check in with students like that. The other part of it that we know is necessary is, um, more direct contact with parents when it comes to those situations. And so I think the protocols that will be set in place, already the teachers have done a great job, I will have to say, um, in District 39 in doing that. But we could communicate that explicitly, clearly, that that, and they will, I know without a shadow of a doubt, you know, feel that it's as important as you are experiencing right now.
Yeah.
Yes. There are teams that have been talking about development, teaching, learning especially, some of those protocols, so that all teachers and all parents and all students are informed on, if you have a Bobby situation and you're not turning in things that you used to turn in, then I'm gonna act a lot more quickly as a teacher and as almost that student team, to get the Vlad involved or to get the administrator involved and, and the parents involved, so we can set up a plan for Bobby. And I think that was also a part of the importance of us spectating in some regular win time, so that teachers could pinpoint and say, hey Bobby, while you normally have this time, I, I wanna pull you because I need to talk to you about whatever's going on.
Or even, or even before it becomes win, that's what I'm saying. It might not even happen to become that situation. Just to let that student know, like, hey, we're still here and this is different, but you're accountable.
Absolutely.
And, you know, what works best for you, and, you know, figure out, like, maybe they might need to express themselves about what works best. But, um, but yeah, I, I, it, you know, I'm gonna echo Lisa really quickly and just, the presentation was amazing, but one of the things that stood out was this professional development and then included parents. Because this is, there's an aspect of home tooling here that, you know, parents are clueless. I'm one of them.
Many of us do.
So, um, but that's part of it. It's like pulling the parents in and saying, this is part, you're part of this, so this is how we're gonna do it.
And this is part of our communication with the advisory task force and one of our points of question or feedback to ask them, you know, if we wanna offer this, in what format would we design it?
Thank you very much. Other questions on assessment? Okay, who's got another topic? Done?
I, uh, like to understand more about how the buildings are gonna be working. Big picture or, I don't know, fairly specific, so.
Do you mean like space-wise done?
Yeah, yeah, what's that look like to have these smaller classrooms or any of you that? We have actually enough classrooms to have those kids in all the classrooms, or taking to gyms or, you know, I'd, I'd like to understand.
So I can give kind of a big overview and then our, our administrative team can jump in. Um, what we wanted to do in building out our scenarios is make sure that we had ample space to accomplish each of these scenarios within the physical constraints of our school buildings. And so we made an assumption that, let's assume all students opt in for whatever model we're going to implement, can we fit them all and what would that look like? And so each of our administrators did an analysis of their building to determine what spaces could be used. So at the elementary level, we looked at if we need to reduce class size down to sixteen to eighteen students, that means essentially we're adding a section per grade level at each elementary school. Roughly speaking, sometimes two, sometimes none, roughly speaking, if everyone comes back to school. So they had to look at their buildings and identify what are the typical classroom spaces and then what other spaces might be able to be used and converted into a general education classroom so that we could accomplish those additional, essentially six rooms of teaching space. So in some of our schools, we are looking at the possibility of using our gyms and converting the gyms into classroom spaces. Cafeteria spaces have been looked at, obviously we're not going to be using our cafeteria spaces in the same typical way. We looked at using stages and auditoriums, we looked at using, um, learning commons in some of the tech spaces that are available within our learning commons. The board has done a really nice job of creating some flexible space within our learning commons, and some of those are easily converted back into general education classrooms. Again, keeping in mind that we don't have students moving from common spaces back to classroom spaces, back to common spaces. Those common spaces won't really be used as common spaces as much anymore. So the same is true at our five eight campus, where for the most part, we're adhering to the classroom spaces that are available. But Kelly and her team really looked at what other spaces could be used so that we could reduce class size to the greatest extent possible and really maximize use of our space. We've also been looking at outdoor space. We're contemplating the need for tents outdoors so that we can make that space as flexible as possible, bring some furniture out there as well, whether our class just wants to take a break or they want to instruct from the outdoors, we wanna make sure that that space is available, again, to the greatest extent possible. Team, did I summarize that well or are there other things you can add?
No, I think we've also looked at classrooms and what furniture will be moved out of classrooms and what is essential to keep in a classroom. So moving everything that is right now non-essential out of the classroom so that we can space the furniture that does need to be left in there appropriately for students to have six feet. Um, looking at our hallways and making some hallways one-way and kind of having arrows leading so that we have, anytime there does need to be movement in the hallway, that it's more structured and that students can keep socially distanced. We're looking at schedules to use water fountains even, to make sure that we don't have big groups of students in the hallway at the same time. So it would be more of a scheduled, structured group of students that would work together. We would know this schedule of other groups as well.
Knowing that we're on track with our scenario planning and if we are able to offer the opt-in fully remote option, we'll be able to use that enrollment data to really build out what it actually will look like. But we couldn't come before the board or even our planning committee and make a proposal that logistically we knew based on enrollment, we couldn't implement. So we know the script footage within our building will allow us to fully implement full in-person instruction at the elementary level based on what we've described to you today. And we know that a hybrid model will work at our five eight campus. We know that full in-person at the five eight campus would not be possible under the current guidelines of six feet of distancing.
So, so if I'm hearing you, we're not percent sure, but, but we, we have the space and maybe there'll be kids in non-traditional.
Right. Yep, in our, in our principles, again, have really thought through who would be best suited for that kind of space. Maybe our fourth grade students would be better suited for accessing a, a gym environment, a modified gym environment as opposed to, you know, our kindergarten students. But again, some of that is site-specific because the gym at Harper is very different than the gym at Ramona. And so we really have to, to look at that. But again, if we offer the full remote option and families access that, that flexibility of space changes slightly, but again, just gives us more flexibility, I think. Great question. Space question?
Yep. Um, right off of that, regarding the space, alternate space, um, spaces, I thought it had been answered in the slide because it looked like, um, you were planning to use most of the alternate spaces for art and like you moved the art classes into the museum and the music classes into the auditorium, like, things like that.
So in.
To free up the, it, it's looked like to free up those, the smaller room for classes and the.
Yeah, it, yes, and so what we had looked at also is in the hybrid model, you'd have, I as the art teacher could pull these fourteen students and these fourteen students or twelve students or what have you, and then take them to the cafeteria for art and be still socially distant away from each other, a larger space, and run the art class that way, so they could pull two classes at a time and do it that way. Then freeing up the art room as perhaps it could be used for an accelerated math class, it could be used for a special education class, that sort of thing. We also have rooms throughout the school that we can use for those purposes. If we do reduce our class size, we'll have to figure out where we can put the classrooms, additional classrooms. So this gives us that ability as well.
So, yeah, because I was hoping that that was the case. I was hoping you were opening up rooms like the art room for a homeroom.
Yes.
Instead of placing a homeroom in the cafeteria or in the gym. Because you and I had a conversation about that, the, having a homeroom, any homeroom in a huge wide open space teaches training for teachers.
Right.
Because teaching in a wide open space is a whole different thing.
Absolutely.
And then obviously students with sensory issues or students with, you know, ADHD or whatever, that becomes really challenging to focus in a huge space. I mean, it's like a whole.
With the movement of our creative arts classes and, and, you know, that we have a construction project going on as well. So we have three classrooms that are currently under construction.
Yeah.
And those could be easily converted into regular classroom spaces. They're a little bit smaller, um, in size, but that can help with that flexibility.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just glad to hear that you're considering everything, but yes. You answered my question, okay, good.
Other space questions?
Hey, I would just be, my hope that we can accommodate classrooms that have windows. So when I, you know, and maybe that is not possible, but some of these alternative spaces don't have windows, and I think if you're a student or a teacher who is in a room without a window and you're not moving throughout the day, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Like a stage. Right, stages, but, so it, it may not be possible, but that's just.
Yeah, I think a lot of work's been done on this, but it's probably is worth covering, but air circulation is a big deal. I'd like to hear more about that.
Sure, I can touch on it. Stan is not here with us, but when we come back to the board again, we'll have some, some additional information that we can share around all of our health and safety protocols, including air handling. But what we understand regarding the pandemic at this point is that air circulation and air exchange is really important. And so there's actually a school code pre-pandemic that dictates the rate of air exchange that must be available within a classroom. All of our classrooms meet those codes. There's another element, which is the heat. And we do not have air conditioning in all of our classrooms and in all of our buildings. That is really challenging. However, that's a different issue than the air exchange issue. And actually, as we have understood it, air exchange is far more critical in the pandemic arena than is air conditioning, although we're all super uncomfortable when it's hot and even that much more uncomfortable when you have to wear a mask and it's hot. So what we understand is, um, considering adding, say, window units and some of those other air conditioning features are not possible at this point. We also know that, um, it's advised to make sure that your unit events are on and at full capacity at all times, that the air exchange is happening, and then also opening windows and opening dampers to the greatest extent possible so that we can achieve that, that air exchange at the rate that is expected. We have heard that some districts need to disable their air conditioning in order to maximize the air exchange. Obviously, that's not a concern for us at this point, but a silver lining maybe that, um, we do have proper air exchange, um, and air exchange rates for our classroom spaces.
Yeah, the last one. So, so I was thinking about, um, if it's gonna be hot, we need air exchange, are we creating new potential security issues that we should think about if we have already?
So the short answer to that is yes. Not in so much as there are air, there are security concerns, but most certainly we are going to be maximizing outdoor space to the greatest extent possible. And when students are outside, they're not behind a locked barrier. And so we do need to be really cognizant of that. We won't be opening and leaving open exterior doors, so our buildings. We won't be opening and leaving open exterior doors, so our buildings will remain secure as they always have. Opening windows doesn't reduce that security element. But we are cognizant of the fact that as students are outdoors more often, they are less secure than they would be if they were indoors, if you're talking about intruder concerns. And so we do have to make sure that at any given time, we have ample space to bring all students indoors and properly socially distanced. We can't rely solely upon the outdoor space at any given time. Weather may create some challenges. If there is something happening in the community, we want to make sure we can bring students in and maintain safe social distancing and a secure environment as needed. So, um, great kind of question.
Oh, sorry.
A, a quick one, a little bit funny, but what are we doing to keep our teachers away from each other as much as possible?
So we're actually looking at that in our subcommittee in terms of like staff lounge, break rooms, and trying to identify areas for staff to be able to go away from their classrooms to eat lunch and simply take off the mask and take a break. So it is, it isn't, I mean, it's a real issue that we're trying to address because there is still only so much space. And then we're gonna try and capitalize on our good weather until the snow hits.
Adult transmission, you know, is, is more likely, I mean, whatever the terms are right now. But obviously, break rooms and just any kind of gathering of adults is something that would be.
The masks are an expectation for everybody, so just continuing to, to be mindful of that. We've been living in this space for about a month now with more of us coming back together. And we do a pretty good job of policing each other when we forget or, you know, I step out and somebody reminds me to, to pull the mask up, like.
It's like the.
Yep.
Yeah.
The other piece to add is, we've been talking in terms of Zoom for students, but we would be also using Zoom for staff. So staff would have access to that account to have their meetings or if they need to quickly touch base with one another. So they will have a digital way to, of course.
It's actually one of the topics we'll be talking about today at our planning committee meeting this afternoon is support for standard.
It's just off of that, it has to do with the mask thing, is, um, I was, I had written down, how will kids be able to take a safe break from their masks? Do we have a plan for like a safe space for them or, um, is there, what was that?
So we're working on some protocols, but we do have a couple of things in place already. One is we have purchased for all students a barrier that will sit at their desk that will provide an additional layer of barrier for students within their space. We also anticipate those mask breaks, as we just all experienced, going outside and, and taking a break in that regard as well. Some teams have discussed the possibility of maybe creating a space where a student might be able to access a mask break of sorts. But there's a lot more discussion we need to do around that. Heather, I know that's a team that you're leading up. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, masks are required in PE outside.
If, if individual, if the group can social distance properly and you're outdoors, you can take your mask off. So if you can maintain six feet or greater of space, you are able to take your mask off outdoors.
And there will definitely be more conversations about this, but in one of the many pieces of research we've done, they called it a shit break. So the mask being lowered, part of the expectation needs to be that there's no popping, right? So if you're gonna take a mask break, then you say within your barrier there's no popping or we find a location that is safe, like, so I'm just adding that point to it. So that's the piece that's really important.
Um, other space questions?
This is a math, oh, math question, is the kids that said they, the parents said the kids didn't wear a mask or had a medical exemption, did they wear face shields then?
So we'll be exploring all of those options. They probably will be individual considerations. And we also need to, again, think about fully remote options for students who, who maybe can't wear a mask as well. So, so there's a lot of individualized problem solving there. Again, with right now, we have about more than half of our, our students having responded, parents having responded on behalf of our students, there's only about 10 who say absolutely can't. I'll have a medical exemption, and so 10 is a, a number we can certainly problem solve around individuals, so yeah.
Other space, space or mask questions? Okay. Um, so if 20% of the children opt for remote learning, does that get us to a low enough number to, to get everybody five eight?
Uh, no. No, it probably reduces the need for some of the additional staff that we were anticipating. But again, those staff will then be working remotely, so it doesn't even reduce that. Now, we, we, we truly would have to go to almost 50% in order to, to not have to use a hybrid model. Get it all, the number may be 60% to be really more specific. So 40% we have to opt for fully remote in order for us to get all students in person at five eight.
Oh, you just said that's about right.
Yes.
Off of that, I don't know if it fits in this category, but since I started. One thing that I was gonna bring up is, as you get older, the ability to deal with some of this remote learning, some days on, some days off, hopefully gets a little bit better. And at least it's something like I'm getting high school that this has transferred. Overstating it. So when I look at that, I think of the fifth graders in particular. You know, I, I love the fact that we have fifth and sixth as a middle school and, and in a normal environment, that gives us a real leg up on, I think, everybody in the school districts. But a lot of other, in the general school districts, junior high is six, seven, eight, seven to eight. So the fifth graders are kind of this in-between category, and remember, we think five and six. But somewhere down the line, if you're looking at partial modifications or reopening with a little bit more things allowed or whatever. Getting fifth graders in school more, so saying that high press, you don't have to do all fifth and sixth graders, but you could get more fifth graders or maybe even all fifth graders, yeah. But sixth graders, no. And I put it out there as an option, but I think there is a differentiation there. And fifth graders also are, I think, more likely to be pre-cuberted. So whatever the characteristics of this virus are, it seems like there's got to be some correlation between eight and transmission. So fifth graders also would fall into that potentially if we learn more.
Thank you, Frank. That's a really good suggestion. And we will certainly look really closely at that, especially as we have a better sense of who's opting for fully remote. We may be able to look more carefully at the fifth graders. I would also like to mention, we've been in some really fruitful conversations with the Park District. And they are, they've indicated they'd be willing to support and able to support some childcare options on the days where students would do remote learning away from school. They may be able to access the Park District recreational facility through a signup program where they could, they could receive some support and some childcare there. So primarily targeting fifth and sixth graders, but that's a, that's another support that we're, we're working on for families in the cyber bomb.
And I, and also wanted to add that we've had a lot of discussions with some great fifth grade teachers on our teaching team. And when it comes to orientation even, or the beginning of this year through camps, making some adjustments specifically for fifth grade to give them some more opportunities in that fashion. Just for that very reason, I call them little, little fourth, or little fifth graders or old fourth graders. So it's truly, that's kind of how it is. So I appreciate that.
I have a comment and then my question related to something carried just a few minutes ago. So first of all, I think the plan is phenomenal. I think the proposal checked all the boxes of the planning commitments. And if it makes me kind of teary to think of all those K4 kids, like in-person, like that we can pull that off six feet. I think it's just astonishing and amazing and awesome. So I fully support funding whatever initial teachers and staff you need, whatever supplies you need, whether tents or whatnot. I also support the opt-in remote only for a semester option. I had a question about that. So I'm thinking, keeping, obviously with the consistency that you added as the fifth planning commitment, which was a brilliant addition. I'm thinking, it sounds like from what you said, that those kids and teachers are kind of a separate entity, even though there's consistency, then the in-person hybrid, is that the case? So we're not asking teachers that are, you know, teaching in-person to also be dealing with it remote-only people, right?
That, right, that's, that's what we're envisioning. And that is specifically why we needed to get a better idea of who might opt in for that because it will become really difficult if it's such a small number that we can't create a meaningful group of students connected with a teacher. At this point, we are recommending that option because we think that there is enough interest that we could create that meaningful, you are a hybrid, hybrid group, I mean, a fully remote group for the first semester and then those connections are without that. Yeah.
So Erin, you raised a really good point, and I'm gonna just focus us for a little bit on this issue because you need a decision.
We, we would like direction, thank you.
So can, can we focus for a little bit, a discussion just on that so that we can give the district a thumbs up or a thumbs down guidance? So that the topic on the table is, are we in favor of providing a remote-only option for families who would like to, um, to do that? Yes. Mark?
Uh, so one question I have is, well, okay, two questions I have are, what's driving the semester as opposed to a quarter? Because I understand we don't want people coming in and out on a weekend, week-out basis. But I'm wondering, but I, I mean, we don't know what's gonna be happening in a month. Six months is a long time to make a decision for, and, and I think people will learn stuff. The other question related to that is, if people, I can imagine circumstances changing in ways that make people say, you know what? Actually, I'm not comfortable with this, and I'm wondering what will happen. That, that's gonna be a tough thing to handle if people can't opt in later in the semester. I don't feel like my kid is safe. I want to keep him or her at home. Can I do that? No. That's gonna be a tough one. And I can see a lot of circumstances, like an increase in local cases without going to phase three or things like that, which may put us in that situation. So I'm just wondering, A, how we're thinking about what drives a semester versus some other timeframe? And B, how we're thinking about late opt-ins or remote options.
Yeah, so I can speak to that just a little bit. The semester suggestion really has to do with what we understand right now. The science is telling us about what may become really complicated for that second quarter. So we don't anticipate there, there being, if, if anything, transmission rates are likely going to go up as we enter into flu season rather than down. And so having parents who want that option available, opt in for the whole semester, seems like the way, the best way to keep that connected and meaningful for that pod of students and the teacher who is supporting them for the semester. And then we can reevaluate from January, rather than trying to reopen things up in late October. I think we are trying to build a system that is sustainable and that will allow us to really focus in on students. So that's the one thing. The second question.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify that for a second? Because that sounds like it's specifically thinking about parents who say, I want my kid to do remote for the beginning, and then they get to October and they say, no, you, you know what? This isn't so bad. I wanna go in.
Right.
But it's not as much addressing the second question we hear about there.
Yeah, right. You're right. So that addresses the first question, is we really need people to commit for the whole semester so we can build that out.
Yep.
Um, the second semester of people opting into remote from what originally was in-person is not something that we've talked extensively about. We can talk some more about that. The problem becomes staffing and a decision-making point. So if there were significant interests, could we staff that? And by which date would we make that option available is something we need to spend some additional time thinking about. What we don't want to do is have kind of the one-off situation where, let's imagine we're a pod and we're being taught by me as the teacher. Mark, tomorrow, your family decides you wanna be remote. So who's gonna be that, who's gonna be that teacher for you? And how do we keep that consistency? Are we live streaming me then to your home for the rest of the semester? That doesn't seem like best practice for you or for me or for the class as a whole. But is there a point by which we could say, okay, now we've got 20 students who are opting for this, we can make a switch and create a new pod for second quarter maybe? So those are some things we'll, I think we'll have to think more about, team.
And again, just clarifying that, it, it seems to me it may be different for K through four and five eight since the five eight, at least the anticipation right now, is there gonna be hybrid anyway? So I can, I'm not saying that this is doable. There are a ton of logistics that I don't understand, and you guys are the experts on. But I can imagine if you have kids who are two days a week remote already, going to four or five days, or two or three days remote, I should say, going to four or five days and staying with that pod is maybe an easier thing than if you're K through four and you're in-person five days, then you wanna go to remote five days. But I may be wrong.
So, so I'll share that theoretically, it does seem like it would be easier than at the elementary level.
This is where you're going, but it's not.
And it, it theoretically is easier, right, than it will be at the elementary level because there will be some students on remote each day. The challenge is our hybrid model relies very heavily on really rich, intensive in-person instruction on the days kids are at school. So it won't look like what we're hearing some high school classrooms will look like, where it's just straight-up live streaming of a, a teacher presenting at a group of students. That's not really the way five eight instruction happens within our district. And we don't believe that to be the best and most meaningful way in which to deliver content to students. So, um, so having students just go home fully remote at the five eight level, they'll be missing what we believe to be a really important element of our hybrid model. And so it may not be as simple as theoretically it seems like it could be. But it may be simpler than at the elementary level, I'll say that much. Kelly?
Yes. Carrie, Kate, you wanna add anything?
No, I agree too. I don't, I don't have an elementary background.
So this is one of those, I think messaging from the board is gonna be really important. Kind of in my opening remarks, I talked about less-than-ideal, like, choices. This is gonna be probably an example of less-than-ideal choices. You're gonna have, as a parent, make a decision for a period of months without all the information you need and then have to stick with it. And, and I feel like the district is gonna have to communicate super clearly that a decision is a decision based on the information we have today. And for planning purposes, it's less than ideal for, for everybody. It's, it's my guess, if we go that way.
It's everyone's best guess.
Yeah, right. I mean, I, Amy?
I, I would just say, I think it is fantastic if we are able to offer it. And it is not ideal, and we can communicate that, but I think it speaks to families and teachers. We hear you. We are trying as hard as we can to meet as many needs as is reasonable. And I think if we can offer it and remember, we look like we can, it speaks all. And I think it would be really appreciated and just honors where people are for whatever reason. So I'm fully in support.
Done?
Yeah, I can see the argument for not offering them. Seems like a pretty strong argument. And it, and it's, I mean, it's almost, almost like we use this word of option that seems to be more like a commandment, that, that you're gonna commit to be remote, you're committing to. I see people reasonably wanting to change their position, right, at any time. So, so, you know, I'm not sure how we would, you know, it sounds like that would be difficult to deal with. And if we, we move forward with this option, it really, it's really not an option. It's a, you, you commit to doing it one way or the other by this day, right? So that would be the next one you're gonna look at when, you know, those are more comments.
So what do you see as, do you feel that it's better not to offer it?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying it'd be a lot easier not to offer it. But if you're offering it, that, that if you're thinking cynically, like, really.
that, that you'd have the most, um, options if you, if you opted, if your kid opted to be in class, right? Because then you, you could change your mind and pull the bounds, and leave the bounds.
No, we're saying, so John, we're saying that by next date, it's like you decide, you're doing all remote, or you're doing what the district does, like, depending on where we are.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking through it.
Oh, okay.
So that may not be how parents pursue this.
Which is why I'm saying we have to be super crystal clear-
Yeah.
-in writing and verbally in education on what this choice means.
Right.
Ellen?
Um, we haven't talked about this, but my guess is that we also, I, I don't, I don't think you mentioned it. Are there teachers that also responded that they really need to be remote learning because of health concerns? Or because of choice?
So we, we did query our teachers, we surveyed our teachers, and, um, the, we really were looking at who, who requires accommodation versus who can return if in fact we are adhering to all of the IDPH guidelines. And the response that we got roughly was about ninety-five percent of our staff can return to in-person provided we're, we're adhering to all of the IDPH guidelines. That five percent, some of those may be able to return, some may not, we have to investigate that further. If we are making a remote option available, there may be more positions available to assign staff to remotely, which then would open up that option, make it more available, and ultimately allow us to accommodate that a little bit more. If there are no remote teaching positions available and someone medically must require being remote, then we have to really look at what, what does that look like? Is that a leave? Is that some other accommodation that we can provide?
Now, I was just wondering if we would be using those five percent to teach these remote, this twenty-five percent, or twenty percent of the student body that wants, that opts to be remote?
Certainly, that would be our, our first priority, our, our first aim. Heather?
Potentially, it depends on how those individual staff members, endorsements and teaching contacts align.
Yeah, how they get, or what grades, exactly. Great.
Assuming it's not like a, like the ten people that might not wear masks, that's such a small number that you have to do that exception. I think there's enough community need, just that having an offering, I think makes complete sense. But separate, but not necessarily equal. So from a resource standpoint, from a planning standpoint, our focus needs to be of the things we've talked about, in class as much as possible, within safety guidelines, optimizing those conditions, optimizing, teacher alignment and schedules and all those type of things. And then as good as we can-
Okay.
-for the other option.
Okay.
Not terrible, if it's terrible, we have to say, should, we'll, we'll never do it anyway. But you can't optimize everything, and optimizing is the main screen program that you've been talking about. As much as possible in person, within safety guidelines. This is an option that we know some people feel very strongly about, and we'll do as good as we can, would be my recommendation. And some of that would be guidelines, like Mark had pointed out, in and out. You know, from a safety standpoint, if you're out and you wanna come back in, that's not necessarily safe for the pod.
Right.
But if you're in and you wanna go out, um, so that was a choice that you and your, your family made. But then there's a, you know, semester break before you can come back in. So those would be the, the guidelines that I would say, but I think you, if, there's enough interest in this, and there's enough people that feel very strongly about this, that having some kind of an option, I think makes sense.
Ellen?
Um, I respectfully disagree, Frank. Uh, I think you're talking about, you know, more than twenty percent of our, of our families. And the other thing is, is that, um, I think that the statistics and, and all the doc, the medical and everything shows that this is gonna be around for quite some time. And so we're planning for something that is gonna be coming and going. And the reason for three plans for all of our grades is there's, I'm, I'm assuming, my best guess is the likelihood of our children, of every single kid in the district, going in and out of different models throughout the next two years is gonna be what's gonna happen. And that everyone may be remote at some point again in the next year, within the next year. I don't want it to be that way, but my, in my head, I'm planning for my kids at some point this year to be remote again, which is not, doesn't make me happy, but it's, it, it, to me, in my head, is a reality. So planning for something that's subpar, just for, for a group of people because they made a particular choice, I don't think is, I, I don't feel is the right approach to this. I think that everyone is entitled to feel the way they do about the, about COVID and the pandemic because they, because it's scary and because it is what it is, and, or they have health concern. Whatever their reasoning, it's not fair to judge a family or group of families for the way they feel. And there, and there's a significant number, and we can do it, and it's their right to opt out. And we should treat them the same way we treat every other family in the district, and give them the best possible scenario that we can give, and it should be better than it was last year, now that you guys have done such an unbelievable deep dive in job, looking into it and improving it, and it's, what was it? It's e-learning on steroids, or?
But yes.
Supersonic e-learning, I mean, I don't know what you came up with. But, um, yeah, so that's just, I, I don't wanna portray it as something less than. I just think that's not the way to, to-
Mark?
So I think that's a really important point, and again, I think, and I agree with it, and I wanna build on it a little bit, which is, I agree that we, we don't know how long we're gonna have to be dealing with this stuff. I think everybody here knows that there's a pretty good chance that we're gonna be all remote at some point over the next, pick your favorite time period. And so in that sense, a program like this is actually an opportunity, right? It's an opportunity to say, okay, how do we build, how do we make our remote learning stronger with a, with a class that is, you know, or a set of students that are constantly remote? So I would encourage us to think about that upside as well. The other thing that I would echo, that I thought was really great, at least I totally agree, is it's gonna be a huge communication challenge. And John, I think that idea of calling it a commitment rather than a choice may be reflective of giving parents the right mindset for thinking about this.
Quick question, does there need to be a floor in terms of the number of people who sign on for this to make sense for the district? So if, if we say today, and I'm hearing we're all, I'm hearing that there's, at least most of us are in agreement, um, if you would proceed, does it have to be fifteen percent, twenty percent? Or does it, you'll be okay with five percent?
Um, it's less of a percent and more about a class-sized number. So I, I don't know specifically what that number is, but my guess is it's somewhere around twenty-two to twenty-four students at each of our elementary classes, and probably somewhere around forty to fifty students at our five-eight, so that we can create a, a pod of students who would be served by the appropriate licensed classroom teacher.
And they could be cross-school, right?
Exactly, thank you for mentioning that, Amy, you're absolutely right. The remote learning environment would be such that if it's, if there's forty-five second graders who commit to remote learning, uh, full remote learning for the semester, those forty-five second graders then would form two classes, and they may be from all over the district. And, and there's some benefits of that, some, some real beauty in that.
So I just wanna go ahead and do a straw poll at this point, and say, I feel like, um, we're all in favor, but I don't wanna, I wanna like people to raise their hand if not, if I've misread the room, of providing an option for families to say, I want full remote learning semester at a time. Okay, so the nons have it.
A commitment.
A commitment. Are there more questions on this point?
Are we gonna make it clear to the families who are wanting this, that we have to reach a threshold in order for it to happen? Just to manage their expectations?
We will make that clear, though, I don't, yes, we will make it clear, thank you.
When are we gonna ask for, when I'm sure?
So our plans are set to be released on the thirty-first.
Oh, okay.
Though it seems like we have pretty good alignment around the scenarios at this point. When we announce our plans, we also want to be able to thoroughly address all of the health and safety protocols that will be in place, so families feel well informed to be able to make this choice. And so, um, when we release on the thirty-first, we'll give a review of what, um, the recommended opening looks like. It sounds like we're talking about, uh, full-in-person elementary school hybrid model five-eight, and an option for committing to a semester of full remote learning. And then we'll kind of walk through, what does the school day look like? What protocols will we have in place? What does entrance and exit procedures look like? What does mask wearing look like, all of that? So that families are really well informed about the option that they are selecting at that point. When we rele- release that on the thirty-first, we'll give them a, a window of time to respond and make a commitment. I have to be honest, and all likelihood it's gonna be a week. So by August seventh, you must commit, um, to full remote learning. Otherwise, you will be scheduled into the in-person option, something like that. And then we'll start building out the actual classrooms and schedules from there.
Okay, great, and then also just to be clear on the other part, that kind of, that it's, that the remote learning program will be as robust as the other options. So all three actions get equal weight.
Yeah.
Amy?
Let me, just, because, see, rightfully said, to see how it different, I mean, just, we're both over. When, if we go to full remote, that's being optimized, there's schedules, there's, there's a lot of work being put into whether it is we have to be fully remote. I wasn't implying that that was secondary. What I was saying is, you can only have one, in my mind, you can only have one primary thing at a time. And if our primary thing is in-class as much as possible, hybrid, or whatever it is for the different grades, you can't, you can't serve, serve two things at the same time. I would just say, that's the primary. If there's trade-off here, if there's a slightly suboptimal, if, if you do remote, you can only take Spanish. I, I'm just throwing that out as a, as a, that would be a trade-off, I think makes sense. Not, it's a toward program, because we would never do that. But it may not be as fully staffed, as fully robust. You can only get one option for your, um, trade-in artist, the name of it, for your, your specials. You know, and, and that's the only option you get. You know, if you didn't like that option, that's unfortunate, but that, that's what I meant by trade-off. I didn't mean full remote is in any way suboptimal. That's a strategy that's gonna be optimized. But if we do this partial remote, or part of the people being remote, there may be some options and permutations that are not available.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Heather, I wanna, Amy?
Amy, without further ado.
It's just, it, I just challenge us to think about our opportunities in the coming year or more to build community. It's just what came to mind when we're talking about all this, is, uh, you know, kids and teachers and families have identities at the school, and, and we're not gonna be doing whole-school assemblies, and some people might be doing it remote. And I think it is not the primary purpose of our conversation here, but I, I'm thinking about how we can incorporate that as we're divided by masks and computer screens. And I think that's a really important thing about we do well, and it's part of why our kids need in so many different ways and identify, so however we can will have it.
So I think that's a really great point, especially given all the loss that kids are experiencing in terms of community.
Or mutual pride.
Yeah.
I'm so glad you brought that up, I have a whole page on it. So, um, you know, you guys did such an amazing job, I'm gonna say it, with all the planning and everything. This is an incredible plan, but, um, "community building," I wrote, quote-unquote, and I said, I love, um, that this has come up over and over. But I'd like to remind everyone that we, as a district, um, and that our children in this district are not going through this in a vacuum. It's really easy to forget, um, that, um, there's a whole lot of other things going on in the world, too. There are a whole lot of people that are, even our next-door neighbors, that are experiencing things that are much more difficult than we are, they're, they're not as privileged, the school systems don't have the amazing administrators and planners that we have, or the, you know, access to the same technology even that we have to get through this. And, um, you know, we had been on a path to ensure, um, our, you know, as a strategic plan, to ensure that our community was inclusive, and all these things, you know, and to, and to build that, that, you know, this year was a big year for us. And then now Black Lives Matters has come to the forefront in a very important way, bringing to light, um, those injustices. And I think it's so important this year that even while we're together, remote, partially there, whatever, that somehow we sow those seeds throughout everything. And, um, really continue to weave that commitment through every aspect. I mean, this is such a great learning moment in history for us. This is, you know, we keep saying it's unprecedented, it is unprecedented, it's a pandemic. I think our kids need to understand how it's affected worldwide, everybody, and different people, and also how people who are less privileged than us, how this has affected some people much more profoundly than us. I mean, and we have suffered too. And we have people in our own community who've lost everything, but there are also people who've lost a lot more because of the color of their skin, because of, you know, where in the city they live, and how it affects, you know. So I think that, I just wanted to say that, I, I think it's just really curriculum-wise and not everything. This is the time, I mean, it's all come to a head, um, now, and now's the time to really, really continue with that. So, Amy, thank you for bringing it up, but, um, I just wanted it to be there.
Well, those thoughts on community, let it take us back to topics. Okay, so in terms of board guidance, I wanna make sure you have it on your re, element that you need them. What do we still need to give you guidance on this?
So let me summarize what I've heard. The model for fall reopening, which includes full-in-person, uh, modified schedule at the elementary level, a hybrid model at five-eight, is affirmed by the board. That is a direction that, um, provided we remain in, in phase four and the guidance doesn't change, we can proceed with building out those models. I also heard that, um, providing the option with commitment for full remote learning is something the board is supportive of us doing.
We just stopped there, right there, correct?
I do have a question on the first one, but you can keep going through the thing, but I can come back to it. I don't disagree that, that that is the direction, but I have a question.
Okay. The other element that's kind of aligned there is the transition date to full-in-person at the five-eight level. We talked about having some options, either picking a date, uh, and transitioning, or transitioning when we enter to phase five, or when the guidance changes. What I'm hearing is, the board is supportive of us not picking a date specific, but instead transitioning when we either move into phase five or the guidance changes such that we can adjust the distancing.
I'm looking at everybody.
Right.
Correct.
And then I also heard a priority for, if it's possible, to bring fifth-grade students back to full-in-person with proper social distancing and adherence to all of that, um, the board would be- The board would be in favor of us exploring that as an option. It will depend greatly on the percentage of students who select full remote learning and in the space that's available on the teaching staff.
Okay, I got it. The nod's all around.
Okay. That's what I heard.
Is that what you needed?
That is exactly what I got.
Let's go back to Mark's point, just so we can
Just a question on the first one. Is, are there any circumstances under which we would consider going to a more, I'll call it, remote scenario than we are allowed, than what's required by IDPH or ISB? In other words, imagine that we suddenly saw a bunch of cases pop up in Wilmette or in our students of Macaulay or whatever. That may not trigger a change in the phase for our section, but we might want to do something different. So that's my question.
Thank you for that question. In fact, what we anticipate building out is some decision-making protocol that will guide those decisions, because we may need to make some of those decisions on a class-by-class basis. One of the things that's key for the six feet of distancing and mask-wearing is the transmission rate between individuals. And so there may be a case where there is one individual who tests positive, then we need to decide, does that mean the whole class goes remote? That individual goes remote? What other interaction has there been? If it becomes two or more individuals within a classroom, now we're likely going closer to that pod goes full remote. And so creating some decision-making tools around that and some protocol to follow. We're hoping to avoid the whole school has to go remote, but there may be a circumstance where there's an outbreak or something happens and we feel like our protocol calls us to make that whole school go fully remote. So we really want to build out those scenarios. So yes, is the answer to your question.
Okay, and I just, I'm gonna, you'll go in a minute, but I just want to set the stage for the rest of this meeting. This meeting is not about that, right? Like in terms of, today was high-level direction, which we just gave, so thank you all. And then next time we meet, it's going to be more about kind of stuff like that. Like the details of how we stay safe and things like that.
That right here? That is correct, yeah.
Okay, just want to be clear. Go ahead.
So now I don't know which, whether, I mean, the details are the high level. So you can, you can, this may be, this may be for a future topic as well. I think our five principles that we said at the beginning are great and right, and we've all approved them. So then my immediate question is, okay, so how do we monitor across all of these things? How we're doing, get that feedback and adjust? And, and one comment on this, this is a terrific plan. You guys have done an outstanding job. All of us have said it, I think all of us feel it. I will be shocked if what happens in the fall is what we think is gonna happen. And we all, since you guys are laughing, you all know why I'm saying that. And so let me emphasize that the thing that I like about this plan is not whether we're doing in-person at 5th grade or 4th grade or 6th grade or whatever. That's, you guys are great at figuring that out. The thing that I like about this plan is that it demonstrates that the team was able to get together and quickly assess the situation, understand the constraints, and come up with a solution that worked. And so my hope, and this goes to the monitoring piece, is that you will feel very much empowered and directed to continue that monitoring, assessing the situation, adjusting on the fly, and not feeling constrained that, well, you know what we said in July, that we were gonna do this. We all, I mean, I will speak for myself, not for the whole board, but I definitely understand that all this stuff may change. We might get massive, you never know.
So I do want to say, Mark, those points are really well said. I mean, the, the guiding principles, the, the whole focus on consistency and flexibility, so that you can take the guidance and, and work within it is, is
So this may be a details question, but the timing of it, I'm wondering because of, when I'm actually example, August, right?
Well, we'll talk about that.
Is, do you guys, you must have had classes?
So we're gonna, once we finish this portion of the discussion, we're actually, we have a few more slides to talk through in terms of board logistics and budget. So yes, we'll get, we're gonna transition there now that we have this guidance. Let us talk through, we have staffing, budget, and calendar and policy to still talk about.
And I swear on these, I swear on, I can really quick. Okay, I have three, three quick questions, or things that were outstanding. One was, you mentioned paraprofessional use? And I'm unclear about that. Are you hiring more paraprofessionals? Or expecting to?
So we're gonna talk about that when we get to staffing slide.
Okay. And then what, separate from that, in terms of, again, this section, what did you mean when you said, like, more paraprofessional use? Like, more creative use of paraprofessionals? I didn't quite get that.
I think, based on the spring's experience, I think what we are really focused on is utilizing our paraprofessionals in more meaningful ways. So training them on how to run small groups, really having them work and play in closely with teachers. And so that there are opportunities for them to be more, less on the side of that, but more engaged in, in helping kids in meaningful ways.
Okay.
And when we're in in-person, typically there's a certified teacher within the environment and a paraprofessional. But I think this time has offered us the, like, the time to think through, okay, this is what we believe we're comfortable with in how they interact with us.
Okay. And then the, the second question I had, had to do with, kind of came up even more so with the, when you're talking about, you know, the possibility of bringing 5th grade back and separating out kind of more towards 4th grade. And then there was a, in the very first presentation, there's discussion of vertical kind of learning with like 7, 8, and 5th, 6th. And to me, I was questioning, I said, but what, isn't there a really big necessity to deal with the, the 6th, 7th grade transition because of what happened in the spring? That there, wasn't there a lot of fallback? Or I don't know how you want to call it, but like slipping backwards for some of the 6th graders in terms of their learning? Where you might have to have some vertical learning from 6th to 7th again?
Yeah, and we, we started, we ended the last school year with meetings between 4th and 5th, 5th and 6th, 6th and 7th. The teachers, so to start to have those vertical conversations as far as where they went. We also have done some assessments at the end of the year on to where students really landed and who was engaged, who wasn't engaged, how hard they got, who might need some extra help. So that's all things that we will be building in to planning for the fall with teachers.
Not just 6th, 7th, but every grade level had the opportunity to do that. So those teachers reflected and articulated what they were able to teach and what they were not able to teach. And then they met with their teams across the school to talk about that. Then the grades across district level talked about that. So the difference with 5'8" is the entire grade level is at one school. So that conversation was able to happen in real time of the, you know, just the individual grade levels at each school. But it was really important for us that all the elementary teachers, 2nd grade, talked to one another and communicated what, what they anticipated gap may be, so that we're informed in how we plan and annotate our curriculum maps in order to get to them at grade level this year.
Okay, I'm gonna do a quick timeout here on process, because it's almost 11:00. And I don't know if people have hard stops. We have business that we actually have to get through. I don't want to be disrespectful and not have your questions answered, but I just want to understand when people need to leave.
Well, we have the advisory committee at noon.
Okay.
Noon.
So we have a hard stop at noon, and we still have staffing, budget, calendar, executive session. Why don't I suggest this? Are there burning questions that people feel that they need to answer now? Or can we go do business and then if time remains, we'll come back and get your questions answered? Is that okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Yep. In light of that, then, we will flip back to our presentation when Tony has a moment. We are going to walk the board through what we anticipate to be the impact of these models, knowing now the direction of the scenarios. We had built out some information so that you can understand what the impact will be on staffing, on budget, on policy, and on calendar. So I'm going to ask my team to succinctly review the information that you have. And again, we'll have some opportunity for discussion at the end by the board. Heather is up first, then, with a quick review of what the staffing considerations will be for these models that we have proposed.
I've talked a bit about this already, but the key to these plans is the reassignment. Our focus is on reading, writing, and math essentially. And our goal in this process is to look at staff that might be not assigned to a homeroom currently, but also endorsed to teach a homeroom or elementary ed. And so looking at, to see how we might be able to shift assignments through that process and hire when we need to. It's not gonna solve every issue, but that's the first plan. Our goal was to maintain at least a part-time tech position and a part-time leading specialist at each school. And we can accomplish that and with reassignments. We would just need to hire one additional teacher at this point. That is the bare minimum. We recognize that's gonna go up. And so you'll see down the road, our ask is a bit more with about four to six, anticipating move-ins. Our margin for class size is much smaller since we're at a smaller level, et cetera. Grades 5'8", we're looking at adding two new homerooms in 5th grade and 6th grade. So that double A team that we've talked about the last couple of years at the junior high, we're looking to extend that down to high press to, again, be able to potentially make some of our class sizes smaller if need be. And looking at special ed, LBSs, learning behavior specialist, adding some additional support there so that we can get the student form uploaded.
Okay, so we have several budget considerations, you know, based upon the scenarios. If you were to go through this, the whole school. So as far as additional staff, we'd be looking at additional four to six certified teaching staff between 4'8" or staff, whether that's custodian or help with supervision or instructional assistance. Then in the area of PPE and sanitation and other supply needs that we may need during the year. From a budget standpoint, the majority of expenditures in this area will be due to the budget. And while some of the items, we, you know, have a good idea of what the totals might be, some of, most of them, we just really don't know how much we're gonna need during the year. Transportation. So we, we had our ridership sign-up deadline. We have about 70% of our fall 2019 sign up. And when you look at it by school, the range by school for regular ridership was between 67 and 75. So there really wasn't a big disparity. You know, kind of our assumptions would be that we'd have one student per bench on a bus. If there are siblings going to the same building, they would be able to sell the same lunch to the bench together. And a mask must be worn at all times. There'd be a seating chart, you know, students would be sitting in some place. We operate in a two-tiered busing system where the driver goes out, has a route, drops kids off, goes out and meets another set of kids. You know, the one deviation from that, for this model, was that after that first route, the bus driver would need to go through, would clean the seats before they would, you know, pick up another set of kids. And at the end of each day, there would be a much more extensive cleaning done to the entire bus before the next day's routes. As far as the cost, and we would anticipate that the cost for transportation would be very similar to a normal year with fees dropping, obviously, 30% that we normally would have seen not, have not, you know, elected not to sign up for transportation. Food service. Where we're at is that we would offer one full lunch option available per day consumed in the classroom. But, you know, my understanding is at the grade 5 to 8, that this is a pretty big deviation from prior years. You know, how, what students may have liked to do, this remains to be seen. You know, I would expect that we would see a pretty large decrease in food service fees, combined with the same level of staffing to be able to prepare the food and then get it to each of the classrooms. The extra cost associated with either wrapping or boxing the food items to get it to the classroom. Our net parallelized initial recessions with Lisa probably maybe towards more boxing. It sounds like that would be easier, it'd save a lot more time to try to wrap each individual item. That could, you know, some of that can be offset by, you know, purchasing less food overall. You know, with the grade 5 to 8, we're only gonna be there half of the kids and then every day of the week. Additionally, since we're talking about expanding additional sections in each grade level, we're gonna have to outfit those, those classrooms or spaces. There will be some curriculum needs. There'll be some instructional technology needs. You know, how much need in those areas are we kind of, how many sections we may need? And then in the area of training and support, you know, especially as we've been attempting to, you know, do all of this within our existing training and, you know, professional development allotments. But the reality is, we're probably gonna need to invest some additional resources in these areas to meet the, you know, very different needs of our students and staff during this time. So how does this impact the fiscal year 21 budget? You know, we go back to the May tentative budget presentation. The operating funds, after we subtract out the other financing uses or transfers, the surplus was, was just 22,000. So what does this mean? This means that, you know, as we, you know, returned it to the in-person instruction, this would place the operating funds at a deficit for the current year after subtracting out the other financing sources. You know, what does this mean, you know, in the future, looking forward? It just means that as we consider future years, when we're down the road, we would have to carefully examine, you know, particularly in the area of large expenditures or capital expenditures, you know, how we want to approach those things to maintain our fund balance goals. And then, you know, I've mentioned a few things as it relates to, you know, just returning to in-person, but between now and the presentation that I'll do in, in August, I'm sure there'll be one more changes and others, things that I know that I'll be getting information on in the next few weeks that will impact that presentation.
So anticipated policy revisions. I checked the press, I've sat in on some of their webinars lately. They're not recommending any changes to current policies. I also checked in with the district's legal counsel, who also are recommending no changes, but reinforced that those three bullet points fell out, which is providing the notice of requirements for the reopening of schools, how we're gonna enforce these requirements, and written acknowledgement by students, staff, and parents of these expectations. So it wouldn't be board policy necessarily, but informed consent eventually.
Potential calendar revisions, we've noted just a few here. The calendar is still under review by the planning committees. But we do know a couple of things. The November election is deemed a no-school day, we have no option in that. So right now on our calendar, that is reflected as a school day, so we'll need to make that adjustment.
Wait, is that because they're, is it polling states?
Uh, no, it is a state requirement now by election code that all schools, regardless of whether it's a polling place or not, have no school on that day. So we are not allowed, there's no exception, there's no waiver. We are not pulling, our schools are not pulling places as it stands, although we've heard a little bit around the rationale that maybe that they want to open up additional polling places and want to have access to that. We're not sure. All we know is that it's a requirement and there's no waiver, there's no way around it. So that date will need to be adjusted. February Institute Day, that should have been a township-wide institute day this year. And the township has decided that won't look the same as what we had planned for, groups of people coming together and congregating for township-wide training. So we may look at moving that, that date of institute to a date earlier in the school year. Again, we don't know yet what that date might be. We're also imagining that there may be some flexibility in how we invite students to come to school on August 27th and 28th, just to, again, support the transition, the protocol and arrival and dismissal, and what health procedures look like. So if, that probably wouldn't constitute a calendar change, but just in awareness for all of us that that first week of school is gonna look a little bit different than what things will look like as we enter the second week and beyond. It is also noted that we have up to five remote learning planning days. We can just schedule We can just schedule those out for the whole school year. Or what most districts are doing is preserving those dates so that if and when more dramatic changes in guidance occur, we can use a day to support our teachers and administrators in reviewing and adapting accordingly. So again, all still under review, but we will need to make a calendar modification at some point. We hope to bring that forward to the board in August for consideration. And that gets us to discussion and feedback. And so here we really just want feedback on any of those items. We're also looking for feedback on transportation and any other areas that you might have feedback on.
So I'm thinking just to organize this, let's, let's take them off in order. So starting with staffing, other questions about staffing. And then do you need us to give you a thumbs up or thumbs down or is this informational?
Unless you see huge red flags in our approach, we don't need your approval. We, we simply want to bring you along in this journey because when Cory comes back in August to review the budget, it won't look exactly the same, yet it's hard for us to predict right now what it will look like. We believe very firmly though, we're, we're on solid ground in terms of an increase in expenditures and the ability to recoup or make decisions down the road that will allow us to maintain our fund balance goals long-term.
Okay, staffing.
So let's say we were to go the high-end proposal, six certified staff, eight support staff. Would you say that is still in your language of the bare minimum?
Yes.
So I'm concerned about staffing to cover all this. There's already a stock shortage. I think that this is going to be a seller's market this fall. Meaning sellers are the teachers and subs and that the school districts are the buyers. And I'm wondering, would it be worth it? I mean, you could approach that two ways. One is we could hire more staff, thinking that way we're getting people up front. And then if teachers get sick or they, you know, whatever, that we have them in place and figure there's going to be plenty of work for them to do until they may have to slide into some kind of homeroom teacher's role. Or we can just wait and do the bare minimum and hope that, you know, if we need more people, then we're going to be able to get them. I think I would advocate the former approach.
Heather, Frank?
I was going to say almost exactly the same thing. So. Especially for the teachers, some of the support staff roles, depending on the role, there, there are unfortunately a lot of people unemployed and that may not be in the same category depends on the role. But because of what's going on with remote learning and all these other scenarios, the skilled positions, teacher positions, I believe it's probably going to be seller market. So what I would advocate is you pick the right number. We aggressively hired for that. And if you end up with one or two extra people because you put out five options, figures that people would say no, and they all said yes, come back and ask for forgiveness.
Okay.
But don't do it the other way. You know, wait for somebody to say no and then they have put the next offer out. And then, then we end up with two and we need second. If we save six and we get eight, subs are going to be necessary over the course of the year.
So what I'm hearing then is the direction, at least from this side of the table and nods from that side, is go ahead and impose and begin hiring for those six to eight teachers now in anticipation of that need. Use them as subs or use them flexibly as the case may be.
And you've been heard it more dramatically, but Aaron on the side of more and less.
Eight, eight, if it's eight to ten, then that's eight to ten round up.
Round up.
We're well aware.
Yes.
Okay, other points on staffing?
Heather, did you hear that?
I did.
Cory, did you hear that?
I did.
I just wanted. Did you hear that enthusiasm?
And are you happy?
And you'll get the best people now.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're nervous about the.
Well, and let's be clear, this is our most important resource. There is no other resource that's more important.
Very good. Now let's talk about the budget. Who has questions about the budget? No, budget. I'm going down, I'm going down the list and I guess I'm going to do budget, then we can do buses as a subset. Budget. John?
So if you were going to set expectations, what would that look like? In million of dollars?
And I just want to say, we know you just got here. And there are lots of unknowns. Lots of unknowns.
Right, right. So, you know, as I, I'll start with, start with before I answer significantly. So one of the things I had read in late May, early June, throughout my, like, national, who this official association was. Ironically, the example they used was near and almost our exact size of students. Was that to bring people back in person, that was going to cost one point eight million dollars. And so when I read this, I was at another job, which is about three times the size of like five and a half million dollars. And so as we started going through, through all these things, you know, the first year like. And so like where we're kind of at now, as we've talked about a lot of these things, the range that I'm seeing is, you know, somewhere between like eight hundred thousand and roughly one point eight million. That was, you know, kind of based upon the hiring numbers. You know, offering transportation and food service and, you know, having instruction for the full year, using those supply, you know, those supplies and curriculum. There's a lot of things as we sort out the details that, you know, it might save us, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars here. But if we need something over here, so, you know, I could see it going either way. And then, you know, long-term, how many days do we actually get in person will have that kind of goal. So that's kind of the range that we're, we're looking at as specifically relates to.
I have a stupid question. Days, more days in person makes the deficit, the expenses go up or go down?
I would say if we ended up in person the entire year, it would definitely be worse than if we were here for, you know, three or four months and then did the rest of the year.
Okay.
Other questions? Again, understanding you don't have a lot of the facts yet. Okay, I'm going to move us. Is there a decision or a direction that you need on busing or is it just, do people have questions?
It, it's both. We would like to flush out any questions people have. One of the concerns that we have is that we know busing will be, transportation in general will be less reliable than we are accustomed to. Part of that is because we have to adhere to all of these health and safety requirements. The other part is simply that it will become much more difficult to find drivers and to sub for drivers. And then third, we've heard from the busing company that near and around schools, they expect excessive congestion because most families will be walking or driving their kids. And so the routes will be less efficient. So all of that really just brings to the forefront the concern around busing. We invest a whole lot in transportation. We are not required to transport anyone, but it has been our custom as a district to provide transportation as an optional previous program. Families do not pick up the bulk of those costs the board does. And so we're really just looking for some direction, not only in terms of do we provide the service, but then secondary to that, if we have to prioritize, is there a prioritization idea that the board might like to suggest to us?
Okay, so let's, let's kind of chunk this out, right? So the first is, do we want to provide busing? And then the next one is great prioritization. So for example, we will provide busing if you live in a mile and a half away or a mile away. Like, is the option of imperfect busing one that we want? Erin?
My question is, as it gets to the next question, the concerns you have, would they be assuaged if we had less bus riders? So would we have more reliability, theoretically, they're getting, you know, places on time, whatever, more if there's less, if there's less bus riders?
Some of that may be aided because there would be less stops. If there's less riders, there's less stops, especially if the ridership is coming from a more condensed or specified area. But it does not help. Less riders does not help with the congestion around the school and it does not help with the substitute driver shortage that we expect.
Okay, let me just also understand. So we would, the, the, what's on the table is the same number of buses?
Right. We have been told we cannot increase the bus, the number of buses. The, the transportation company just does not have the capacity to increase the number of buses or routes that we're running.
So if we offer busing, we would have to prioritize because of the one student per bench? So I'm going to rephrase. Do we want to provide busing on a prioritized basis? And it would be prioritized based on kind of, I'm assuming ridership, whether it's a mile or mile point five, like.
It could be unless someone has another.
We're going to do it in two parts, I think. The, the first part is, do we want to offer busing? And then what restrictions do we want to put on it that, that may mitigate that?
Okay, so who wants to talk about whether we should offer busing?
I have a question about that is, so we have a contract with North Shore Transit, right? So let's say we were to say we're not providing busing, do we have to pay the money anyway?
I don't believe so. Cory, do you have any further insight on that?
I don't believe we do. We would, we would, I mean, we would go through that.
Okay. Frank?
I think there's some big restrictions. The answer though, given that, come up next. But I think philosophically, there are, there are people at the Fire East and definitely the Fire West end in our school district that, that rely heavily on busing. And if it's possible to do it financially reasonably and enough people sign up for it, I think addressing those needs is important. But there's a lot of restrictions, which is second. I think philosophically, at least for those key extremes. Get to a mile, it's not legally responsible, but you know, a mile for a fourth grader or even, you know, a fifth, sixth, seventh graders, a lot.
Other thoughts? Okay, I'll win then. I'm all, I'm all about putting an option on the table and parents decide within what's safe and reasonable.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just say, I think about it in terms of priorities. I think it'd be great if we can offer this. This is a much lower priority than others for me.
Okay. Others? You need to, taking everybody's temperature.
I, I go back to a conversation we had, I forget who I had it with, but I think when we get into the notion of imperfect, imperfect busing, we get into a mess that we don't want to deal with because we've dealt with parents before. You know, you can say, oh, it, it'll work out okay and parents will be okay. They say okay ahead of time, but when it happens, it, it's not. Like they're, you know, if they're not on time and they don't, you know, and they're waiting for an hour and it's a, it's their one, it's their kids' one day in school versus out of school and it's going to be a mess. And I actually think that that's setting us up just to fail. What I am for though, is that I know there are families that really, really need it. There are, and I think the families that need it most are the families that either have two working parents, you know, two working parents that have to leave and they have no way to get their kid to school, that live outside of like a mile away. You know, there's a lot of families like in, you know, Glenview that are further away. And so I think if we, I, I really agree with the one mile distance, you know, radius is offering it to families. You know, saying, look, this is the reason for it, really clearly. It's not like, you know, we're not pushing people away because we're being discriminatory. We're actually being inclusive. We're saying, look, you know, kids can walk to school unless there's a medical reason, which is covered by the kids who, who have medical reasons are covered by the special education busing. Or if they have a medical reason that's not covered by that, they, maybe we could accommodate them. I think that's a really good. Or if they live outside of one mile, one and a half miles or whatever, then you're eligible to sign, sign up for busing. I mean, that sounds really reasonable to me because I think kids can walk a mile to school. It's done everywhere else in the whole world. Like why our kids can't walk or ride a bike is, I don't know.
Others?
I like the idea of making it an option at a certain distance.
I agree with that one.
Same. I would go a mile.
One other question is, we have had early drop-off programs which help with this because the parents can't go to the doctor. Have we talked about how we could beef up our early, early drop-off programs or if that helps in this situation?
So we've started to talk about that, but don't have any decisions yet. Again, keeping in mind that whole bubbling idea, the early drop-off option makes bubbling really difficult. It kind of negates everything that we've just accomplished with our scheduling. So we have more work to do there.
So it sounds like the guidance from the board on busing is do what you can.
Yep. I, I'm hearing, don't just continue completely. Do what you can. And it sounds like there's an appetite for the one mile as a prioritization along with accommodations for any unique medical needs or, or otherwise.
Frank?
In the restrictions part, I mean, I was going to bring up something like the mile. The one kid per bench, I think is, I don't know if it's word's aggressive. It's like, I guess it's, that, that's more than I would necessarily hope for, given everything else that we've been talking about in terms of separation. On a bus, you're like only two feet away and that's somehow now okay. Well, one per bench.
One per bench would mean there's each seat. So the children would be required to sit next to the window. There actually, if I'm sitting in a bench and Ellen's sitting in a bench, there is sufficient distance between us. The separation between Ellen and the person in front of her is provided by this, this big barrier. That's a physical barrier. So.
All right. So I, I mean, you'll use your judgment on that. I think there's a fee issue that it needs, the expectation needs to be it's going to be more expensive for the people to sign up for.
People have already paid, right?
People have already signed up by the deadline, which was July twelfth, knowing what the fees were previously approved by the board.
Okay, so not paying.
Oh, yeah, we're going to tell some of them that they can't ride that road. When, when we look at the transportation fees, we pick up about two-thirds. Normally it's one-third, but the federal funding thing is per student. So if the costs go up, we'll pick up two-thirds of the extra cost. So, so, so there is a hit on the school for the kids to take it. So the fact that, that, you know, we're offering this as an option if you live far enough away. But there's going to be some costs associated with that.
So what you're proposing is we increase fees. The board would have to take action to do that, to increase the fees.
When, when we understand what the numbers are, I think that should be an option that's available.
I, sorry Frank, I disagree with increasing the fees because I actually, in this particular situation, which is very unusual, I think that the large number of people that, if we do it this way, the large number of people that were doing this for, for, a lot of people are some of our medias, lower income families in the district that are further away and are not able to do it because they have to, you know, they have to use the bus. And I think in this situation, none of those families want to be called out as not being able to afford to. Like I, I just, I don't see in this situation right now, like making it any harder for any one family just because of their situation, raising fees on them. I just, I just don't see it like.
So here's what I'd suggest. Let's table this one just because we don't have enough information. We don't know, like, the price is going to, price is a function of how many days you're on the bus.
Right.
How far away, how many kids.
So we'll see, we'll see what the fees are.
I'm just going to try and move us along where we can. Erin, I know you want to say something. Are you okay if we table it or was it?
Yeah, it's tied in, so we can table it.
Okay.
I'm saying insufficient information to keep going.
You're, okay.
Okay, so I'm moving us to policy revisions. John?
Yeah, I, I'd like to have a good understanding at some point about how the district is using the medical information that we are accessing. You know, whose symptoms that's sick, whose family has got vulnerable, people, you know, that kind of stuff. And the processes around that. I would like personally understand that we are keeping it. I would like personally understand that we are keeping a bakery type lid on, on that information. I think my perception is that we need to.
So, uh, if you're referring to the data that we've recently gathered from families via our survey?
No, I'm not. I'm saying, I think we're gonna get a lot more information and, you know, we're traveling like wildfire around here. And it's, you know, it's, uh, and it's the kids, right? They don't talk. It's parents, they don't talk. It's Facebook, whatever. But, but I think we should, uh, I suggest that, that we should put some focus around anticipating the information that should not be shared, has gotta be shared. And have some policies around it. I mean, I, I know we already have policies around it. I'd like to understand that a little better.
Okay, other issues on policy, John, Mark?
Uh, we have a outstanding, uh, agreement that right now we've suspended a lot of our, uh, policy. We've noted on that it's gonna end in August. Just wondering what's the anticipation on whether we extend that, if we extend that partially, et cetera. And I'll just go ahead and throw in my sense that if we want to extend that, I would want to do it in a much more specific way than we did last time. So we should, I'd like to get more prepared for that if we think that's gonna happen.
Thanks. Some other issues on policy.
I think, I, didn't we suspend it, uh, just, was that just the policy review, the periodic?
No, that was, we basically said we're suspending our policies. It was very broad.
Oh.
It's okay. We, we did it with trust in our administration. I think that's been well, I mean, I have no problem with the fact that we've done it, but we did it in a situation where we didn't know what was going on. I think we know a little bit more now and we should be tighter on it, I thought.
So two real quick ones. I've read some places that some school boards are being asked to, or I guess the lawyers, I guess something that we did have to prove remote learning. Um, so I don't, I don't know if the school board has to approve that. I mean, there's kind of exceptions. So if you, if you do need that from us, you should ask us. If you don't need it, then yes, that's fine.
You have already approved our remote learning plan, um, right before, or as we were early March, right as we were transitioning. That was brought forward and, and the board approved that. So we already have an approved plan on file. It's a very broad and general plan. We may need to make some revisions at which time we would bring it back for approval. But right now, different from other boards, we actually have one already on file.
Then on the mask side, I mean, if, if we're saying mandatory, if we're saying it's important, and we're saying that people, that kids need to wear masks and that teenagers need to be masked. They're still not recommending that we codify that in any way?
Uh, they're recommending that we codify that within our handbook and the expectations, the behavioral expectations. And that which can, um, hold people accountable for, that doesn't actually fall in policy. That falls within procedures.
Okay, all right.
Other policy issues? Okay, so I'm moving us on to calendar. Are there any comments about a calendar which we can't control? I just thought I'd add my little editorial.
I wonder if we have any flexibility if we have extending heat?
I'm sorry?
Extenuating heat?
Yes, indeed.
Would we do remote if we thought that was a good idea on those exceptional days? Get a mask?
That is, yes, that's a fantastic idea. And I would like to jump on that and say, um, while we can't air condition our classrooms, we certainly can, uh, use emergency days to either call for a heat advisory day. In the same way, I have the authority to do that five times a year, whether it's because of snow or heat or whatever else. Um, but instead, what I would like to do is notify families that we could actually transition to a remote day with notice on those days that we expect the heat to be above whatever threshold we, we say. So it's actually not calling an emergency day. Instead, it's calling for a remote learning day. We'll just easily transition into that. And so I think that would address a lot of the concerns that exist for all of us. Staff and students alike on those really, really hot days. We'd want to use it sparingly because we've also just built this whole big plan to try and get inwards of learning. Um, but there are days where kids will benefit far more from a more, remote instruction than they would from sitting in a super hot class with masks and that inability to move.
Well, given the way we're going, maybe in the winter, they'll have the, the blizzard and the bluster.
Right, right.
So what's the direction of the board after?
I don't know.
My personal point of view, I'd broadly agree with that.
Great, thank you.
Other issues on the calendar, great. Again, just gonna keep us in this clip. Um, I'm gonna just use, uh, uh, well, we have old business. Is there any old business?
Sorry, before we go on, I did want to just talk about the future meeting. So the board is currently scheduled to meet next in August, on August 17th for a committee of the whole meeting and on August 24th for a typical board meeting. Um, there certainly exists the opportunity to call a special meeting of the board, whether it be a committee meeting or an official board meeting. Um, and I'm, I'm interested in the board's interest. Uh, would you like to do that before or soon after the July 31st deadline that we've talked about?
Four numbers. Or, or, uh, do people feel the need to have a preview before July 31st? Or would you like to have a after July 31st, here's the nitty gritty? Or are we feeling okay?
Uh, uh, my personal opinion is that we should be flexible in the ability to call a special meeting if we need one. But if we do it, we should do it for a specific purpose. We need guidance on that. And if there's anything you need guidance on, let us know. And I think, you know, we now have how to do Zoom meetings. So if we happen to not be in place, that won't be a problem. That's my opinion.
Frank?
Uh, so, so that would be, I assume on the 17th, we do the whole meeting. That will have one or two items that aren't related to virus.
That are not related to virus? Yes, we will.
So if we think that's gonna be a really long meeting, it might be necessary to have a second meeting to throw your meeting that we cover at least some topics to make that other meeting not last.
We're still, yeah.
Again, you can use government on that, but if we have a five-hour meeting, we have to.
Okay, so on the issue of the board meeting, I'm hearing that we'll figure it out. Because we need it, we'll call it.
I'm hearing that and I shouldn't preemptively call it now. We will only call it if there's a need for timing or if there's a need for additional guidance. Otherwise, I'm hearing confidence in our administrative team to roll out and communicate our plans on the 31st. Um, and then to update the board.
I heard the same thing.
Thank you.
We're getting nods.
The, uh, you get whatever you roll out to the parents, for the copies that I don't know.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What time is that committee of the whole meeting on the 17th?
All of our committee of the whole meetings begin at eight o'clock.
The new year. Okay, so I'm moving us, um, old business. Any other old business? Is that old business or is it new business?
It was business.
This is, it's business. Old business. Okay, let's do just a quick update on new business, June team. Mark had, um, thrown it out there. I think it's a great idea, but do you wanna talk about it a little bit more?
Uh, not very much. I, I think it would be, uh, appropriate for us to recognize that as a holiday for our, uh, for whoever's working on that day in our schools. It'll probably be a summer school day. I think that's something we should, uh, we should recognize.
Um, and so I guess in the, in the, um, in the name of time, given that we have some time till next June, let's kind of table this till next month.
Okay.
And kind of flush it out a little bit more. Does that work for everyone?
I will actually ask for, for even till September. We'll come in September and offer you a suggestion or a couple of options to consider. But August will already be filled with a couple of other items.
Yeah.
Pressing.
It does, okay.
Um, equity work of the board. I know some folks have some updates. Um, why don't we start with the book?
The book is, uh, What Does It Need to Be White?, which is about the same, where it's promoting white fragility, but it's the same as our recommendation from Pat Sabin Williams, who, uh, probably knows, has been ordering Evanston and it's worked. Um, Carrie was gonna order books for us.
And we have ordered them. They have not yet arrived. So we are.
What I checked, it did look like everybody wants them. So, yes, that's where we're at.
Amy, do you wanna talk about?
Yep, sure. So Mark and I were charged with finding a facilitator to do some work and reflection with the board and with the team about racial equity. And so we have had multiple conversations. We, uh, we would love to suggest the idea of working with Dr. Cornell Logan, who, and Mark can talk a little bit about him. I both heard his C catalog that he wrote in March. Uh, and he's, uh, rough in Evanston, local person who, this is the work he does. Uh, lots of leadership work and work with diversity and equity with schools, superintendents and boards. And he, like, I, we spoke with him. He just had great ideas about how we could, uh, pursue this and the actual logistics of all that, what that format would be are still to be figured out if it's something we want.
Yeah, I know. I think you did a good job. I, if people have questions, uh, you know, let us know. We did talk through some of the like, this is hard to do because, and there's a bunch of reasons. One of them is, may not be able to do it in person. What does that mean? And he was thoughtful about that. Another is, huh, we have a, you know, a more short district that looks like a more short district. He knows what that means. He knows, uh, think about that. He worked with a partner who he would bring in. Um, so it, you know, in talking, and, and then as Amy mentioned, if any of you were at the moment, so, you know, now several years ago, apparently, given time moves, he said, but, uh, he, he gave a, he gave a thought that I thought was excellent and, and, um, appropriately targeted for the, the audience. He also said that he's very familiar with the book and, uh, who feels comfortable leading discussion on that, you know, with that book.
So is there, are there any objections to proceeding with Dr. Logan? Great.
I think there's one logistical question, which I don't know if you wanna, it's an open question, but just so for the future thinking, um, which is exactly how we would do the meeting. Uh, and so, uh, it would be, you know, there, there are, some people handle it as an open meeting, some people handle it in closed meetings. Um, so that's one thing that we have to work through what's possible and then get these board's opinion on what they saw.
Yeah, so we're kind of working on seeing if we can have that be a board retreat. And we're working on figuring out the logistics.
Yeah, what was the timing?
Unclear yet. Well, we gotta work out the logistics first, but I'm thinking not until the fall.
Right, not until the fall. We need to receive the books and give everyone ample time to read the book and then to also get things scheduled. And, um, I know how things scheduling can get a little complicated. Um, so I, I would expect the fall, it may even be late fall. Just to give everyone ample time to begin.
Ellen?
So I have two, two updates. Um, Frank, Frank and I spoke for like two seconds. He, he called me actually. Um, I just want to let everyone know that our, you know, what, our initiative is very difficult to work on, obviously, at this point in time because none of the schools are in school and doing a project where we find a sister school, um, to work with is very challenging at this point since everyone is in the same boat as we are, which is complete limbo, not, and no one knows what the schedules are gonna be or anything. So when Frank called me, I said, I don't think we can do our thing until schools are settled in and we have a better sense of actually what's happening. So, um, I don't know if Frank's on board still with that, but I think it's, it's best to just kind of wait, um, for that one. And then the second thing has nothing to do with that, but it had to do, I think I told Lisa about this, very exciting news. Um, I had brought up to all of you previously, um, an initiative that I started and I'm working on with the ADL. Um, I spoke with Dee Molneres, um, at, um, ISB, who's our Cook County, she's a Cook County rep, but, um, I called her about, um, this initiative that I'm working on, which is No State For Hate, bringing together schools across the state and helping them write their, um, inclusion statements and doing sister schools across the state that are vastly different from one another. Um, and I talked to her also about their new, um, education that they're taking to all this, all the districts. Their, their new, um, inclusion, um, education and what they call, what, what they're calling it, but their, um, their curriculum that they bought into. And they presented it at the last, um, conference. Um, this year's conference will likely not happen. We talked about that too. Um, so we're not gonna be, there, we could have presented at this conference, but, um, so it will probably happen a year from now. Everyone's relief. But I wanted everyone to know that she was, she flipped out when I told her about it. She's the head of diversity, training and inclusion for all of the state of Illinois for ISB. And which we didn't know. And, um, she agreed completely with what I was telling her about their inclusion and what was missing. So she wants to work with us. She wants to work with me and on the plan and was thrilled. And then was also thrilled at the notion of making us a, um, an example district um, for a year from now. Next week, actually, Carrie? No. So, um, and so I said once, and what I'm, what my hope is, is that we'll get started with this in late fall, once you guys have figured out all the other stuff and you're ready. So I just wanted you to have a heads up that it's really exciting and it's on the horizon once you get everything else out of the way and um, you're feet on the ground again and can take a deep breath, that it's just something exciting to look forward to, I think. Um, and, uh, and everyone here, I hope that that's part of this whole diversity training and stuff, so.
Excellent. Okay, I'm gonna move us because we have 18 minutes.
Sorry.
Yeah, done.
Yeah, so, so mine is about, I think, what I just laid in initiatives. And I, I'm going to start with six conversations with the other board members. And there, there gotta be some questions about, you know, your personal take on the issues, uh, your ideas, uh, what you'd like your scope of involvement to be and then what our goal should be.
Love it.
A good kickoff. Sounds like they're all kinds of.
Am I forgetting anybody else in my haste? All right. Okay, good. Thank you, everybody. And moving us to public comment. Um, the district has requested public comments be emailed to publiccomment@womet39.org. Tony, have we received any public comments via email?
Three.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
First one's from Petra Choi to the District 39 School Board of Education. I'm a parent of a rising third grader and fifth grader in District 39. I'm very concerned about the safety of our children and staff at District 39. I believe we should have remote learning for children next year, given the rise in numbers of COVID-19 cases and the devastating repercussions to families. We must be very cautious during this pandemic. It is unfortunate that there are downsides to remote learning, such as not having the same quality of teaching and learning as you would in person, less social connection and difficulties with support at home. There are also families who cannot logistically do remote learning due to two working parents. But I still believe that our district should responsibly choose to do remote learning. For those that are not capable of remote learning due to different family situations and academic needs, our district should think of alternatives. The district, the, I'm sorry, the teachers at Ramona School are excellent teachers and they handled the remote teaching wonderfully, even though it was like, uh, building the plane as it took off. But if they had more time to, to prepare, they would do an excellent job with remote teaching again. I'm a third grade public school teacher and I understand how it most likely will be for kids when they return. Children will have a difficult time managing or maintaining proper social distancing and keeping their masks on. Also, when it's lunchtime, they'll take their masks off and potentially be spreading their germs or viruses to peers and staff and possibly to their families. By having a hybrid situation, students who attend shelter locations will be adding to the contacts they've had, making them school super spreaders through the children, teachers, assistants and other staff. The safest option is remote learning. Even though it is not ideal, there is no easy way to find a perfect solution because it's just a crazy time. During this unprecedented time, we will almost rally together to keep our families safe and keep our children and help our children maximize their learning in low-risk environments. Their own homes. We can recover a child's academics, but we can't recover a child's life or the life of a teacher. of a teacher, nurse, office staff, or other girl building personnel. In my home, we live with my elderly parents, so my children could potentially get COVID-19 and then bring it home to infect their grandparents. This is a risk that the district would be asking us to take if our district goes with a hybrid model. I hope that there will be a push for remote learning for next school year, sincerely, Petra Choi. The next one is from Eileen Ekstrom. Dear Thirty-Nine Board of Education and Administrators, thank you for your service to our schools and community. I know that planning for the 2020-21 school year is under the ever-evolving COVID-19 pandemic is truly a difficult task. I've been impressed that District Thirty-Nine is using a multi-stakeholder interested party process in developing recommendations for the school year. But please do also know that as a parent of this District Thirty-Nine student, I also have to make a decision on essential questions, on my child's health and education this school year also. To be able to do that, I need more detailed information on what District Thirty-Nine plans are for in-person and hybrid school year options. I was hoping to find a report on the District Thirty-Nine website that contained this, but I did not seem to find it. Outstanding questions I have are, what is District Thirty-Nine's definition of social distancing? Is it six feet between students and student desks, or is it less? How many students will be in a class to allow for six feet distance to be maintained between students? Fundamentally, I don't see how it's possible to have a six-foot distance between students maintained in the classroom if it is full class, full-time, five days a week. IDPH and Illinois State Board of Education states that no more than fifty people are allowed in one space at a time, what's District Thirty-Nine's definition of space for fifty people? Classroom, gym, entire school? Does social distancing at a six-foot distance relate to the size of space? How do the current HVAC systems in each school operate to change, exchange air in classrooms to decrease the risk of spread of aerosols? Has additional modifications been made to the HVAC systems, have a filters, UV systems, et cetera? In winter, how will air exchange be improved when heating is heated with potentially older radiator-based systems? What, what procedures and metrics will be, will determine if an in-person teaching needs to be suspended for public health reasons and revert to all remote learning? Will this be determined based on school outbreaks, community outbreaks, et cetera? Who will make this decision based on input from what organization? Thank you again for your service to our community, I know that we all want the same thing, a safe school for staff and students, and enriching educational experience. But as a parent, I need more information to give me confidence that sending my child to school is the right decision, I suspect that I am not the only one, thank you very much, Eileen Ekstrom. The third one appears to be written to the board, but probably is more, more an administrative email, but since the email, public comment, I'll quickly read it. Good morning, I hope you had a great week, my name is Kyle, I'm reaching out today on behalf of Sunshine Behavioral Health, I noticed you had a resource page for your current COVID-19 outbreak. He references the link. We thought you would be interested in adding our new resource created in response to COVID-19 pandemic, this resource discusses how people in recovery can still receive basic treatment and support during quarantine and shelter-in-place orders. Here are some of the highlights, nonprofit hotlines and sources, social distancing information, what is telehealth, online support group information. There's not much out there right now, so we're trying to spread the word on online recovery options during this health crisis. The articles are below for your review, he references the link. Please feel free to use this as an additional source of information, if you have any questions, you can reach me directly, five eight six two six two, two six eight one. If you do not, if you do end up posting this guy, please shoot me a quick email, thank you for your time and consideration, I look forward to hearing from you, all best, Kyle Porpie, Community Outreach Representative, Sunshine Behavioral Health.
Are there any people who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, may I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session, and I'm gonna abridge this, to discuss collective negotiating appointment, the appointment employment compensation or dismissal of employees, or litigation?
I moved to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters between the public school.
That's a short answer.
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Uh, just highlights.
Yeah. Also, to discuss the appointment of employment compensation, the consequence of performance of the employees, which is timely to talk about litigation.
Excellent, thank you. Motion having been made and seconded with the clerk, please call the roll.
Justice ready?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Great. Thank you.